... reading of the University Heights City Board of Education for order. Mr. Coppel, you can call the roll.
Yes, Pepler.
Here.
Mr. Register.
Here.
Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Mr. Silver.
Mr. Coppel.
Here.
Okay, we have first order of business is to approve minutes from the board, regular board meeting on July 8th and special board meetings of July 15th, 23rd, and 31st. I'll accept the motion to make those minutes part of the record.
Second?
Any discussion? Corrections? Okay, Mr. Coppel, you can call the roll.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Coppel.
Yes. Okay, we're here tonight to have our first review of the schematic design, and I will turn it over to Mr. Shergalis, and he can bring along his tenure and we'll listen.
I will. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you. So, I'm going to do some quick introductions because we have a couple of new faces up here. To my left is Steve Zanotti, not a new face, but to my immediate right is Jim McMillan from Karpinski Engineering. Karpinski is a consultant that works for the VSHM Design Team, and he's going to be leading the discussion about the HVAC Center Plan Discussion tonight. Next over is Fred Rogers and Scott Orr are from the Gilbane-Ozanne Team, and then at the end is our VSHM Design Team, Gary Baylog and John Versini. So, with that, I will turn it over to Steve and...
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you all, and we have a very large agenda for here tonight, and I do appreciate the time that the board's putting into this. To kind of get you a sense, today is a work session. We're really to learn about where the project is right now, and sort of when you get into schematic design, and this is normal for the process, is that we're balancing design, program, budget, and systems. And what you're going to hear today is we're going to hear about the design itself, where the architects are right now in the designing process. We're going to also hear from our construction manager about the budget and what those budget pieces are. We'll also hear about the systems, which is really pretty critical in terms of what are we looking at, what are our options, what do we do in that? And then when it comes down to it, as we're dealing with these challenges of budget, design, and systems, how has the program been modified or changed? And so, we're going to have a discussion of that. I really want to point out, though, as part of the project delivery model which we selected, which is called CMF-RIS, one of the things that's been a huge advantage was having our Ozanne-Gilbane team sitting with us as the design is being developed. We're discovering early on that there are some challenges, and they're going to walk us through those. Just as if you recall, there were challenges on the stadium. If you recall, and we were able to meet those challenges, and in the end, the stadium when it actually got built, was built on time, on budget, and we actually got more scope than what we originally thought we could afford. And we see sort of the same processes here, but what we're doing that's differently here is we're seeing those issues brought to the table much, much earlier, so we can react to it and eventually work with the board on what the priorities are today. So, I'm very excited about what we're going to be hearing today. Well, I'm going to start it off by handing it over to Fred Rogers and Scott Orr from the Gilbane-Ozanne Team, and they're going to walk you through. They don't have an estimate today. They've just gotten most of the documents. They're going to be putting together a very detailed estimate and starting that process. But I think it's important for them to kind of outline what are the challenges that we're facing as we come through this. It doesn't mean we need a decision. It just means these are the challenges, and these are things we need to look out for. And so, if I hand it over to Fred, and you can't move it over to Scott.
Thank you, Steve, for leading everyone. I'm sure the Gilbane-Ozanne Team is able to do it as well. The process, as Steve Zanotti indicated, is construction manager at risk, and the key word is "at risk." The "at risk" piece comes in earlier than if you do a design, bed, builds, and then the project, the act of design. So, therefore, we're embedded in the process of how the building is designed through the input that you give, and we offer our input related to sustainability and cost. That said, going from POR to where we are today, we've indicated certain issues that we need to address, and that was in the packet that dated to the board in the form of a letter given September 11th, and I'm just going to highlight a couple of the items that we can have a special favor. The existing building, unfortunately being maintained, basically started with some inherent areas that were not as efficient as the OFCC's design manual will allow. Therefore, the architect has to work around those particular areas, adding on and making the egress areas around those areas, which causes some inefficiencies in additional square footage. Therefore, from POR to where we ended up now, the square footage has grown, as the architect has looked at the existing areas and tried to fit in the new to the existing 1926 building. So, that has created a challenge that we're working through. Also, the soil conditions below where we're going to be building, we made some assumptions during the POR that certain items below grade are going to be a certain characteristic, and we'll have to anticipate how we deal with it once we get the areas opened and demoed and start doing our new construction. So, again, assumptions were made during the POR process that we have to vet as we move through SD phase. HVAC, my good buddy here, as he designs and provides a narrative, we have already made some assumptions on an HVAC system during the POR process, very broad assumptions. So, now, as the narrative gets finalized, we'll be able to hone in on particular systems and how those systems interface with the structure in the building and how it interface in terms of how all of that gets constructed with architectural features of the building. The site is another aspect of it, how the building sits on the site. We made, again, assumptions during the POR process, so now we have more details. We're seeing, you know, where parking is going to be provided or not provided, how the building grades, and how everything relates from Cedar to Washington. So, that said, we're vetting the process and working directly with Baylog on the documents and getting more details from them and having, basically, a good exchange in terms of our experiences and their experiences. So, this is part of, again, the process that you have selected by a construction manager at risk. It gets us involved in the process early on, and we have a vested interest because we are going to eventually be at risk. We're going to eventually give you a guaranteed max price that we're going to have to adhere to. So, we're definitely in the process and working with the architect to make sure this is a success.
Yeah, Scott, do you have any other comments for us?
No, you know, the one item that we missed a little bit, and we're going to talk more about, is really the exterior skin and how that's going to play out during the PORs. And obviously, we made some assumptions where that skin was going to be added. This process we went through, that has changed, and I think it's changed for the better. And so, but what that has done, Fred alluded to some of those inefficiencies and where we're going to allocate where we're spending the money. In the POR estimate, we were doing more of a restoration to some outside areas. Now, it's more new skin, less restoration, but more building in the back part. So, that was the one part that we're still working through. Some of those elevations are very new to us, and certainly for the next couple of weeks, that's the budget process that we're working through.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have any questions before we move on?
Yeah, I have a question. Fred, if you'll go back to your comment about the soil condition. So, as an example, you have some, you've received some of the soil condition reports already?
Yeah, there were some soil borings that were initially made.
Okay, and so, even though we don't have the detail on those, which I don't believe we need at this point, that that's an example of what you're working through to cost this out and how that's in play. You do have those.
We have some preliminary information, and from that preliminary information, we've made some assumptions in terms of the type of foundation system, the degree of undercut that we may have to do. You know, we've made a few assumptions in that regard. Again, more information will be provided once we, you know, get more detail in terms of the building's structure itself and also when we get started.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You know, when we, I'm not exactly sure where we are, but we, in the narrative that we had, oh, yeah, okay. In the narrative that we had relative to the site plan, it talked about, spent some time talking about the parking spaces, and I don't know if this is right to ask for some clarification on what that all means, because I think we were expanding the number of parking spaces, and I think you mentioned something like the possibility of eliminating a couple of hundred parking spaces. Is that, am I understanding that right?
Yes. Would you like to answer? What I would like to do is maybe wait till we get to the site plan review and let them go through it. But I think they, what was, our CMR is very well aware of that and what those implications are in terms of savings or expense and what that can mean. I'd like to have the architects take us through the site plans.
Okay, that's fine.
I've got a quick question. The third bullet from the bottom, simplify interior finishes and site improvements to overcome square footage challenges. What exactly does that mean?
Well, we just received the interior finish schedule in the last couple of days. So, as we go through that and what that plan is, we'll take a look at that and see if there are other ways to accomplish what you're going through, to have some cost savings, to know we have this square footage challenge we need to overcome.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to hand it off to Gary and your team. Why don't you, you're going to bring us through both the plan review, site plan review, and exterior review.
Thanks. Thanks, Steve. You're going to, I think Fred kind of teed it up in talking about where we were at when we were going through the program, the POR stage, and as Fred said, the anticipated, get feedback. The anticipated efficiencies and utilization in the layout, because we were just working with a, because we were just working with, basically, the text and no real plan, they made some assumptions about how, you know, how efficient we could be in utilizing the 1926 core. And frankly, we created a puzzle, and you saw the plan. However, that plan was actually, the gross square footage was over, and the net square footage was over. So, there's another, the other complication in the existing building besides the structure is that that, the building has a very shallow floor-to-floor height. I think it's only 12 foot six. And what that does is, in a, in a, in a building in 1926, when you were just running some, you know, heating and condensate return and radiators, you didn't need a whole lot of overhead space because you weren't delivering air, you weren't doing the kind of air changes, those kind of things. You didn't have the same level of utilities, technology, electricity. So, and we're trying to kind of match that floor-to floors to simplify the exchange and circulation inside the building. So, that's one of the, that's one of the challenges. And so, what that meant was that we needed more localized mechanical equipment because you can't send large duct runs delivering air and that kind of stuff from one side of the building to the other. So, that, in effect, does have some kind of effect on the square footage of the building. Through a series of plan refinements, we reduced the square footage, but it was primarily in circulation. At that time, we were able to get the net square footage in the building probably within about two and a half percent of what was in the net square footage that was published in the program, in the original POR. Even so, the total building square footage was over. So, we went back and we looked at some major plan changes. One of the things that we looked at, coupled with thinking about how to reduce some of the cost of the building, not only in square foot, but also in construction and in structure, and we were able to eliminate a majority of the new square footage that was on the third floor. It didn't go away. It was captured on the second floor, actually, but what that does, did, was it reduced the circulation inside the building even more. So, rather than having some areas where what we call a single-loaded corridor, in other words, you have a corridor space, which is circulation, and you have a usable space on one side, what we have now is basically usable area on both sides of corridor. So, we're using less corridor to service the same usable space. I'll go into the, I'll go into the plans and pull up some of the other changes. We have relocated health, pharmacy, and exercise science. They were up on the, I believe, on the third floor. They are now down on the Washington level adjacent to cosmetology. The public restrooms that were, go to this level, it's a good example. The public restrooms that were in the existing building, that kind of are on the corners, and they are kind of a really strange shape and very inefficient. In talking with Gilbane-Ozanne, we were, we determined that, originally, we thought we'd keep those just the way they were because we thought we would save some dollars. It turns out that the piping inside those has not been changed, it's still galvanized. They're very inefficient in their layout, so what we did was, we captured some of the restroom space by reconfiguring those, we captured some of the restroom space to use as program space. So, we were able to squeeze the building a little bit more because of that also. The digital video and audio labs, which were up on the second floor, are now located, or were up on, were in the first floor, are now located in a bar of academic space that is adjacent to the auditorium and the music spaces, which is, which is one of the things that we were trying to achieve because we think there might be some synergies in programming and curriculum between those two, between those two departments. The other thing that we did was, the mini auditorium was located back here originally. We moved the mini auditorium to the, adjacent to the front entrance, so it's more accessible to the public. And one of the things that happened was because we have the mini auditorium here in the conferencing center, we were able to eliminate a portion of the large group conferencing space because it's really duplicated in that mini auditorium. And by doing all of that, even in spite of doing all of that, we were still over the gross square footage. We were, we were targeting around, originally during the POR, we were targeting about 350,000 square feet, and we were still up around 372. So, we needed to do some additional cutting. So, to reach the building size close to the POR projected gross area, we were directed by the district cabinet to make additional changes. And these changes included elimination, reduction of areas and/or taking certain areas as alternates. And that includes, if we go back down to this floor, what we decided, or what the cabinet decided, was that the second high bay CTE lab would be bid as an alternate. So, that's kind of shown here, this dash line here. At this, at the pool, we had, we had 10 lanes. We were directed to reduce the pool to eight lanes and then to take the additional two lanes, which would stretch the building out to here as an alternate. The culinary foods program was eliminated at this point. However, there is space in this area. Computer, computer engineering is on this level, and FCS, the food program. And in the future, if culinary becomes a program and one of the other programs is eliminated, we think that we can fit the culinary program into that area there. The black, the black box theater, which, if you recall, was located at the, adjacent to the stage, to the rear of the stage. The black box theater was eliminated, and in its place, there is a drama classroom with a small platform stage. That allowed us to move the scene shop into this space and that also, to also move the dressing rooms and those areas adjacent to the rear of the stage, making it more functional. The number of seats in the competition gym, we reduced the number of seats in the competition gym from 2000 to, or 2,000 to 1,900. Wrestling room, rather than being two full mats, is now a mat and a half. Another thing, the, there is a, we are, we are looking into, and we'll see it on the site plan, we're looking into planning an exterior, a freestanding building on the, on the stadium site. And so, there was a, there are some locker room spaces, dedicated locker room spaces inside the building. We are moving those locker rooms out to that building, so we were able to capture that space and reconfigure these areas over here in order to reduce the square footage. The second large group lecture space was eliminated, and the project labs, which are in these areas, on the, on the addition to the 1926, we reduced those from 1,400 square feet to 1,200 square feet. So, essentially, those are, those are the program changes, changes to the POR that were incorporated. We also were instructed to take a look at support spaces and to stay within the OFCC guidelines, but to reduce those down rather than to keep them at the major, but to take those down to somewhere closer to what maybe some of the minimum standards would be. So, other than that, the plan is essentially the same. As I said before, what happened is on the second floor, the classrooms now wrapped totally around the auditorium space. Up on the third floor, as you recall, the classroom areas used to go around art. This is now just the auditorium and the top of the stage house, and the balance of the classrooms flank that in these bars. So, we've really kind of compressed the outside of the building. We reduced the amount of skin on the outside of the building, as Scott has talked about, because it's not just the, it's not just the floor plate that costs money. When you build exterior skin, you're increasing the overall cost per square foot. So, that's, that's all I have on the, on the floor plan, if there are any questions on what I've talked about so far.
Just on the broadest level, I mean, I'm sure we all have a lot of specifics, but with all those additional changes, where are you now for square footage?
We are, we are sitting right at about 352,000 square feet, and if you, if you go back to the original POR, if you used it in the grossing factor that was originally recommended was 1.3, that got you up to 349,800. So, we're pretty much back to what the original target was. However, you know, we, you know, as you, as you look at the costs, and as Gilbane looks at the cost for actual construction because of either site conditions or, you know, the complexity or the detail that is on the additions that wrap around the 1926 additions, all those things kind of factor in. So, do we feel comfortable with the square footage we have? Actually, you'd like to reduce it more, but at this point, we're looking at, if you, if you look at the circulation, it's pretty darn simple and it's pretty darn compact. There isn't a whole lot of area to cut in terms of circulation, so the only thing that, the only option we have is to look at program, and at this point, we're not, we don't feel comfortable in cutting additional program square footage unless, unless we're instructed to do that.
Gary, one of the things that you mentioned was the, the need for, I forget the phrase that you used, the localized air handling HVAC somehow, some, that the square footage needed to be increased due to that expectation. Does that change depending on which system we choose?
That's a Jim question.
Which of the three options we choose?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, outside of the, out in the space and all the classrooms and the academic spaces, the systems are exactly the same.
Okay.
Regardless of three choices.
Okay, thank you.
And if you, if you look at the plan, what we're trying to do is try to put spaces, mechanical spaces, you know, throughout the building so that, because there is a, you know, there is a requirement for fresh air distribution inside the building, and so, but what we have done is, is we've tried to stack those spaces so that we get some, some efficiencies going from floor to floor in terms of piping and that kind of stuff.
It's also located right in the center.
It's, yeah.
Of 1926, which...
Right.
I was saying it was located in the center of the 1926 edition, which because of existing columns, it was really a smart utilization of an existing space that allowed you to have classroom spaces on both sides of it.
And some of these, some of the core, the smaller core areas in the academic spaces, the ceiling heights don't have to be as generous because there are, you know, task rooms or toilet rooms or smaller spaces. So, if there is any distribution ducts, you know, we can run them in that zone there without, you know, as I said before, the floor-to-floor height is kind of squished, so we're dealing with that.
Just a quick question. I don't, I think on the Cedar level, you talked a little bit about the high bay space up at the top there.
Yes.
And is that two high bay spaces?
This, this right now, what we're showing is, is the, is the auto technol, auto technology. If we take the alternate, which is the second high bay space, it would fit over in this area over here. And I think it shows up on...
It shows up on the site plan.
Yeah, it shows up on the...
It's on the Washington...
On the Washington level.
Yeah.
Can you explain just for the general public what alternate means? Because that's a term we're throwing around a lot.
When, at this, at this stage of the, of the design, if we are, if we're looking to reduce the project cost, we would look at taking some areas, bidding them, and we say bidding because this is, this is CMR, so it's not really exactly a bidding situation. But at this point, we're carrying some, those two spaces, primarily the expanded pool and the expanded CTE high bay space, is what we would call an alternate. Because at this point, without having all of the information and without having all of the costs in, we don't know whether we can afford that space or not. So, at this point, we'll carry it as a, it's a number that's below the line, and if, and as we progress further, we may find that we can incorporate some of this. But at this point, we have to keep within the budget, and that's one of the tools that's used to kind of keep within the budget. Scott, do you have anything?
Yeah, the one thing I liked to add, this is real similar to what we did in the football field. It's something that is, as we're collecting bids, we're going to ask for pricing right then of what it's going to take to do that alternate. And if we find through buyout savings or through inefficiencies and how we, how we award the job, that we can afford it right then, then we'll be able to award that. But we separated it out early on, early on in the job.
So, if we talk about the 352, it doesn't include those alternates?
Right.
It does not.
Correct.
Correct.
Do we know how much square footage we're talking about with those alternates?
It's another...
The pool is 2,000 square feet, and the additional high bay is, I believe, 3,200.
3,200 plus the, it's 3,600.
So, it's like...
3,600.
3,600. 3,600 plus 2,000, it's about 5,600.
5,600 more square feet if we do the alternates?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And the, they were reduced at this point because of the square footage requirements?
The gross...
Not because we have any, I, not because we know what the budget numbers are? What the budget estimates will be?
No, no, I mean, it's as simple as when we did the PORs, and it was based on a square footage, which was around...
Right.
335,000 square feet when you looked at grossing factors. When we went through this process and put everything in the building, we were at close to 380,000 square feet.
Right.
So, we've been working to get that back down to 352, knowing that just a price per square foot, you have an issue there.
Yeah.
The goal is to get as close as possible, create some alternates that make the most sense. I mean, obviously, there's, there's some larger alternates you could, you could talk about there, but we were trying to find the ones that made the most sense to make those an alternate.
My, so you're, so basically, you're doing, you're doing it more on a square footage issue as opposed to a dollars and cents issue, correct?
When we're working through this process.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because of the two, the 10 lanes of a pool, I never, I always thought we were just doing eight because the issue was we wanted to go from six to eight, so suddenly, we had 10. The question I would pose is, what do those two lanes actually cost? Because, to be perfectly frank, given a choice, depending on the cost, whatever that amount is, if it's a low amount, so be it, go with two more lanes. If it's a lot of money, I'm much more inclined to do perhaps something else with the money or advocate to my colleagues to spend that money on something else versus two more lanes on a pool, when I thought we were going just from six to eight. Now, we're going from six to 10. That's why I'm curious about the cost.
Well, that's the process we're going through right now. A lot of these documents, we've been finalizing over the last, you know, couple of months. We've seen them finalized in the last couple of weeks. Over the next two weeks, we are finalizing that estimate with these alternates, so we'll be able to talk about some of those decisions.
Because, yeah, because I think coming back, if, like I said, if it's, if it's 50,000, which it's not going to, but if it was, sure, go ahead, but if it's a half million more, I think that, the board needs to say, hey, we got to have... a half million dollars in savings, or quote savings, where do we want to apply that dollars and cents?
Will there be a time in which we can have that conversation? Because with the, I know with the stadium, by the time we, I mean, we had approved, go larger if the money shows up, and then it, and then it turned out, it worked out okay with the bidding, and then it, it worked, all of it came together. But I agree with Eric in terms of if, I would love to know, if there's, if we have a choice between spending half a million dollars on two more lanes, or on a welcome center, or on a black box, or on a whatever it is, I would love to be able to make that choice and not suddenly discover we've already paid for the, we've already bid out the lanes and we're going for it. Is that possible?
Let me start. First of all, it is, we're all, the difference between the stadium, we didn't go through the phases of design, which was schematic design, design development. And we went from right to working drawings, and then we had a GMP. And my assumption is, is remember, we, even if you decide if it's an alternate today, we don't know where, as Nancy said, where the final budgeting is. It allows us to, to just leave it on the side, let's say those extra two lanes, and we might, might decide at one point, maybe it's not worth having as an alternate. Or you might decide, let's keep it going, and we'll go all the way till we bid it, we bid it out, which won't be till next spring before, before that. We're going to go through a whole nother process, but we do want to have something, if we, if we find that we're not in budget when we get to the end of schematic design, having these alternates as schematic design alternates. Then we'll reevaluate it again in design development. We will come back to you and say, look, you know, hey, we found a way to get it, maybe we don't need as alternate, or we found something else that's more, that maybe we should make the skin less or something like that as an alternate. And these are things that are going to keep, keep changing. The great news is, we're not going to put you, I think one of the things that was difficult with the stadium, even though it was very successful, and we got everything we wanted through those alternates, it, we kind of put the board at the last minute, make a decision. We're not asking for that today. What we're saying is, we'll make one decision, that's schematic design, and that'll, that'll, that'll put us at a point in time. We'll then reevaluate all those decisions again during the design development, and then we'll reevaluate them again when we put the GMP, which is about 75% CD. So we'll, we'll actually do this three times.
Yeah, see, hearing you say that, I think it would be good for us to kind of rehash that, what that timeline looks like. So when we get together in two weeks, maybe we could have that laid out again.
That's excellent.
Right. And make sure that we know what we're dealing with. But anyway, that's real, real important as far as I'm concerned, because we're not going to actually, we're going to have a schematic design, but we're not going to have dollars yet. And so at some point, we're going to have dollars, and we're going to be, start talking about the schematic design in the context of cost.
We will have a schematic design estimate. Our goal is, is in the next work session to present, on the 30th, to present a schematic design estimate. And remember, it's only an estimate, which again, we'll look at. But even once we finalize the schematic design and his estimate, we will go through the whole process all over again. We'll start all over during design development. So that's why I think your, your point, let's show you that schedule, that yes, you'll make some decisions at the end of schematic design, but you may change those decisions during design development, and you may change them again then as we get to the GMP.
But once we get to the 30th, then we've got cost every time, estimates as well.
Estimates, yes.
Cost estimates then. Once we get there, then the next, every time we go through and we redo it, we will, that will still, we'll have those estimates all along the way.
Again.
So when we make, when we start moving, when we, as we're moving forward, we can kind of see what we're doing.
That's, that's, and that's the purpose of this delivery model, having the Ozan Gilbane team sitting with us, that they're estimating as we're designing, so we don't find ourselves in the position when we bid it out, that we can't afford what we did. We know for sure we can afford it, and they're willing to take the risk of building it for that.
Yeah. And I guess, just in, in the back of my mind, there is a notion that as we're going through this process, where all, the cost that we're looking at actually includes options around materials and stuff like that?
Eventually. I don't think in the schematic design...
No, that's really the next phase. The more, when you get the DDs, you get more detailed breakdown of what we're looking at. So that's when we're going to be talking about different options for paint or flooring or all that kind of stuff.
Are we, are, are you going to take us also through the site plan now? Okay.
Unless there's any other questions on the floor plans.
Well, I've got, I got minutia, but let's do the...
Minutia.
Well, like you did before, floor by floor, go through.
You want to stay on, just stay on the...
Let's do the outside. Do you want to do the outside? Do you want to?
I do not care, as long as the questions get answered.
That's, I like that. We can go back and do the, we can go through and then go back if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay. Whoops. Oh, I did want to say one thing about the, we do have a roof plan, and as part of our due diligence, there are some opportunities on the roof. All those little, all those things there are potential locations for future photovoltaic or solar panels. And there's also space on the roof for a green roof or rooftop garden, if that is part of the budget, if that is desirable, so. Just want to throw that in. Parking and circulation. One of the things I'd like to say about, about, about the building itself, I'm going to call it, instead of a building footprint, I call it a building roof print. And the current building roof is approximately 114,400 square feet and some change. And that represents in terms of roof area, a reduction of 48,322 square feet from your existing building, which means it's, it's about 30% less roof stormwater runoff than your present building, which is a really good thing. So that's good. The site circulation is very simple. There's a drive that is on the east, and there's a drive that is on the west. There's limited parking adjacent to the building. This is the pool back here, so there would be some parking for, public parking for people who were, would be going to the pool. This is where cosmetology is, and also there's the, the AD's offices down here. So patrons for cosmetology could pull up and park here and go right into that area. There's also, this drive would be one way going to this point, and the special needs students are located on the Cedar Street level. But their bus could pull in here and park, they could go in immediately inside there. There is an elevator that takes them up to the Cedar level, so they have a very short distance to go. And all of the special needs, a majority of special needs classrooms are on the Cedar level, right in this zone right here. So that works out very well. The drive on this side is two ways. There is a, there's three lanes. There would be a lane for queuing up. The main entrance to the building for students who are being dropped off or picked up is here, so there's a lot of space. The, the circulation that now happens with folks who are pulling up to drop off their students, it would still remain the same off of Washington, so that, you know, that's a familiar thing. But what we've done is we provided a much clearer circulation, and then they would exit here, and presumably, they would only be able to make a right turn onto Cedar. I'll talk a little bit about this in a bit, too. Also, there is a repaving project, we've been told there's going to be a repaving project for Cedar, and the city has kind of indicated that they are, they are open to potentially relocating some of their signals on Cedar to kind of help the traffic that is coming in and out of the building, both pedestrian and vehicular. So this is the main student drop off. There is some parking here for visitors who would be coming into the main entrance. There's a service court back here that is by, that is by CTE, and then also building services, there's a dock area. There is some parking back here for vehicles that, for folks who would be coming to, either to drop their cars off for service, or after cars are serviced, they could park them out there, or there's some space for vehicles that are part of the program to be parked. And there's also a work yard, an exterior work yard that is part of the CTE space that is over there. There would be a gate here, so that in the evening, this could be gated off for security. There's also a gate over here that would, would block any traffic here, and a gate over here, so this drive becomes inactive in the evening. We think that, we know that if there's, if there's a large event where you're parking a lot of school buses, either for a sporting event or for some event inside the school, that this drive is a perfect place to double park a number of buses. It can accommodate probably, I'm going to guess, at least 12 to 14 buses in that drive, if not more, if they, if they park all the way down to here. So the circulation on the site, around the site, in terms of vehicles, is very, very Pedestrian, pedestrian traffic, or pedestrian circulation is also very simple. We think that this entrance is, is going to be used also by students and potentially for events in the evening. So this also, besides the entrance on the west, would be a focal point, and kind of reactivates and celebrates the original 1926 building in the entry. The circulation again is very simple. If you're walking from here, you, you kind of go there. If you're walking from over here, you go over there. There's, and then there's a center sidewalk here. This is the existing sidewalk. There is a cross sidewalk that goes from, from this sidewalk that flanks the drive, as well as this sidewalk that flanks the drive, and then connects to those exits that are, the stairwells are, that are on the front of the 1926 addition. There's parking, or there's facilities for, for bicycles over here and over here. There's also a patio area that would be enclosed by a low wall, potentially maybe a fence that is outside the, the student dining area. Now, I think I've covered most of the circulation. This dashed area here represents parking on site for approximately 200 vehicles. It's about 190 some vehicles, but approximately 200. The, the preference that has been expressed by the city is that they would, they would prefer that we have as little onsite parking as possible, because they like the school to utilize the public parking that is over here. And as I said before, they are open to, to changing some of their signaling on Cedar to accommodate crosswalks that would get primarily staff from parking over here to the building. This, this parking area, the existing, your existing site has about 147,000 square feet of hard surface pavement. The new site has, if you include this parking area here, has 156,000, or 158,000, over 158,000 square feet of hard, hard surface pavement. If you, if you would not, if you would choose to not park onsite over here, because frankly, what, what would happen is if you have a lot this size, you are going to eliminate one of your ball fields. You can't, you can't have both ball fields and a, and a parking area of that size. What that would do, though, is if you did not pave that area, it would reduce, from your present hard surface parking, it would reduce the runoff by about 37, almost 38%, which again, you know, you have infrastructure, you've got to detain or retain that, that water onsite, and then you've got to filter it, all those things. So this is, this is a potential significant cost savings if you do not do that. Now, there is an option to do less parking. You could do, you could do one lane with a double row, and it would fit approximately in the area that is the practice area, I believe it's used by your band right now for, for band practice. Frankly, your, your hardball diamond does not have regulation lines to, to the fence currently right now, so it probably wouldn't interfere with that. And, and the softball field could probably coexist with that. But that is, that is another option to just reduce the amount of parking, but you would not be able to accommodate all your staff parking onsite if you did that. So one other thing is, as I mentioned during the, my description of, of the changes to the interior of the building, there, we are looking at right now a, a freestanding building for the stadium, and it could go here, it could maybe go over there, it could go over here. Programmatically, it would have, it would have public restrooms for both visitors, and then public restrooms for the home side. It would have concessions for the visitors, concessions for home side. It would have the football locker room, which would also, for the home team, which would also be used for some of the other sports that use the field and the track. There would be a smaller locker room for visitors. There would be a weight room and potentially a small training area, and then storage for any track equipment. So we just started programming that. We don't know, we don't have an exact size yet, but that would, that would occupy this portion of the site. We're also starting to look at a master plan for the balance of this area. And then, again, coming back to this area, whatever the decision is on parking over here, we would then continue the master plan and complete the entire site. So this, this area that we're looking at in front, we were thinking that it would primarily be lawn area, because it gives you some flexibility in terms of programming, if you wanted to use that as an exterior space. There's some opportunities in the back for, we know that we're going to have to filter the water that's leaving the site, so there could be some bioretention areas or filtering swales, as well as maybe some opportunities in some of these other areas. So any, any landscape, I think, that we contemplate for here would probably want to be indigenous and probably would want to be low maintenance. There are, there is, there is the potential for reuse of stormwater, for irrigation, so that is also a possibility. Those are the, those are the kind of à la carte things that I think that in the next phase, you're going to look at in terms of pricing, and you'll, and you'll be able to make a, an intelligent decision in saying, well, those things are really important, you know, and we can afford those things, or maybe those things aren't so important and they're, and they're too costly. So that's where we're at for right now, in terms of the site. So any questions?
In the, in the discussions with the city, I guess two components. One, since they obviously want to fill the very vacant parking garage, did they discuss anything as far as improvements, lighting, sidewalks, making it a much more compelling travel from the parking garage to...
Are you saying on their side of the street?
On their side of the street, the lot that they own. That's what we own.
I, I, we didn't get that far with the discussion, the discussion, but I know that, I think one of the things they talked about was that they are, they have a way of kind of using ODOT standards and then kind of changing that so that it accommodates bicycles and that. So they are, they are considering more, more pedestrian friendly, more, more bicycle friendly kind of environment. And they, you know, we did have a discussion about lighting on our site. But I believe they are, I think they are including lighting in their, in their repaving.
Well, in more, in more specific dollars and cents, the, if they're doing Cedar, are they doing, they're doing curbs, obviously. They're replacing sidewalks in their project for Cedar Road.
Yeah, they're doing the whole streetscape. I don't know all of the scope of that entirely at this point.
Well, the reason I ask is because if they're doing the sidewalks, the, you know, the whole length of Cedar Road, that's a lot of concrete, and that's a big check, I'd like us not, I mean, the reason, the real specific is...
I'd be surprised if that's what they're doing. Based on Mayfield, they haven't done any sidewalks.
But the real, the real issue for myself is, is the sidewalks next to the east field are like a foot away from the curb. It would be awesome if they're doing new sidewalks to move it in two or three feet, so we've got more of a tree lawn versus, you know, it's not a fun, that's, the football field, you're not, there's no, there's no option because it's the space. But if we could bump the sidewalk back on that portion of Cedar Road on their dime, that would be...
This section right here?
Exactly. I think that would be a much better visual streetscape and much more, much more pedestrian friendly as well.
I'm, I'm not sure if it's even reasonable to get into these kinds of questions this early, but to your budget issue, Eric, I, my first reaction to using the space across the street and having less paved space on this site is absolutely. I think it probably also has a, a positive impact on our budget. But I would, I would also be surprised if the city doesn't require that the school district pay for the parking accro... across the street. So that would be-
Well, in our initial meetings, in our initial meetings, and I stress, these are very informal initial meetings, they indicated that, that it would not be at a cost to the district.
Okay, that's great to hear.
More to come, more to come.
Yeah, no, that's great to hear. I just, I, those are all, all decisions and components. Does the, does, does keep, does minimizing the number of parking spaces onsite and the amount of paving onsite also help us with the different lead certification levels?
Yes.
Significantly.
Well, if you, if you don't, if you reduce the number of parking spaces and the amount of hard surface paving, it gets you some additional credit. The, the other thing is that, you know, when you think about, there is an embedded cost in there because you have to maintain that, you have to eventually repave it because it's paved. And there's also things like snow removal and that kind of stuff. So, you know, it just, if you think about the infrastructure that's gonna be required to contain the runoff from that, there's, there's, there's a first cost, and then there's the continuing cost of that.
Yeah. I would agree, I mean, I agree with all that. I think that using this across the street is a great idea. I agree with all of them. The more green space we have, the better. I do, however, personally, I would, I think it would be useful to the community to have a smaller amount of parking spaces, perhaps between the two. One, because there's, you know, loyal softball contingent who will figure out where they're gonna go, right, if they're not there. But, and perhaps as importantly, the, when we do have things like the All School Musical, when we have these contests, we're hosting a lot more. One of the things that we talked about is by making this a much more public space, that we can have other groups come in, they can use our auditorium, they can use the meeting rooms, they can use, I mean, things like that, that we want to open this up to the community. And right now, there's not much parking to support. There is, but I mean, I think if we could have a little more parking, if not enough for all the teaching staff, at least enough for the community, which we wouldn't be using all the time, but some smaller amount than the maximum needed, but something that would welcome the community who doesn't necessarily know, if they're just coming to see their grandchild in a show, or someone's coming in from Solon for a contest, they don't know necessarily to park at the garage and walk across the street, but if they see a visitor's lot in the middle.
I would, actually, I was, like, I was, I like the idea of using the city lot. I think that the problem we have right now, we have, we don't have enough visitor parking on the site. I mean, even if you put the entire staff across the street, there's, you're talking a dozen visitor spaces on the, on the site, on the one side. The question I would pose is on the west side of the building, north of the visitor's seating area, right now that is paved and there's, there's a, it's parallel parking, on this you have it as green space.
This section over here?
No, I'm talking on the, that's the home stands, the other side. Next to your bus drop off.
Over here.
Yes, north of the visitor stands, you have that as green currently, that's paved with parallel parking, but you could do pull-in parking. If we're gonna have a community swimming pool, we have to have more, you don't want people having to park, I think, we need to figure out within, even if we put all the park, staff parking across the street, we need to eke out a few more visitor spaces in this design because-
You know what I'd like, what I'd like to take away tonight in terms of direction would be, if, if, if the, if the board would say for a majority of staff parking, it would be across the street, but we want to accommodate without, without getting too encroaching, with being able to maintain those two fields, about getting some additional parking either over here, or potentially, you know, you could, you could potentially with some grading, you maybe could get a, this could be, you know, pull-in parking all along there. You're never, the, the point is, is that you're never going to get, you know, the, the amount of spaces for the number of people who would, who, if you, if you had everybody come to a function in your auditorium, you're never gonna be able to accommodate. So somebody's gonna have to park someplace. But we can certainly look at, we can certainly look at making for smaller functions, making the site more friendly for onsite parking without, you know, the best thing to do would be to utilize the drives that you already have, because rather than doing another drive and then doing more parking spaces, you, you already have, you already have the drive there, why not park off of it? So we could, we could look at that on both sides.
I would say yes, please.
Yeah. The, just a, a quick question about the signals. Are the signals on this drawing where they are now, or?
No.
Okay.
There's one here.
There's one here, and there was another one down here somewhere, isn't there?
There's, there's the city lot right here, but next to Wendy's, there's-
But there isn't one right?
No, there's no like-
Oh, that's all the way down to Goodner, huh?
Goodner, yeah.
Okay, okay. Just in terms of that area where, that green space where the ball fields are, there seems to be excess space there. I mean, that, in fact, we could have some parking there, right?
Part of the, part of the problem is the way the fields are set up.
Well, yeah, I was gonna ask about that because-
You have a grade, you have a grade change here, because you, you remember, you're kind of, you know, there's kind of a plateau here that this, that sits on. So, you, you could, you could move the fields, but then the issue becomes, what happens when somebody hits a foul ball and it ends up on Cedar? You know, the-
Well, that's happened before.
Then that happens now, yeah.
So, to, to short answer your question, you, you could look at potentially maybe reconfiguring the fields so that they're more compact, and then you could get, you know, you could, we could, we will look at organizing that space in a few different ways in order to kind of, you know-
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, because I think, what we would like to do, I think, is to, is to maximize the use of that space, and I think the way it's laid out now, it doesn't. You know, you've got some over here, and then you've got some here, and then you've got a little bit there, you know? So if we could somehow think about it in that way, I think that would be a great way to go about it.
And, and that process of, of getting the fields back at wherever, at whatever configuration, but getting the fields back to use, to use is already in the budget, at least, for the overall project, right? Because we were planning, the plan is to use all of that space for everything that you need for construction.
Yes.
So what we're asking, possibly reconfiguration, isn't going to add significantly, if at all.
Wouldn't pay.
Well-
Okay.
Realize during construction, you're gonna be basically beating up grade and grass and stuff like that. That's, that's not a big cost. If you're gonna be changing reconfiguration, you're changing fence, dugouts.
Stamp, yeah.
Those are, that's what's expensive about a ball field. We don't plan to touch those during construction.
Okay. So we'll have to consider all that.
But I mean, with all, I think what we have is nice to know when I was there, but it's still, it's no, it's no, you know, Taj Mahal. So I think that, yeah. With all the, and even the, I think the batting cage was a Boy Scouts Eagle project, so I think it'd be great to keep it, but I think that's gonna probably, that was like 20 years ago. So, but yeah, I think the, I agree, the reorientation of the fields with the home plates and what have you, I think that would allow us to have a much better field. And like Nancy and everyone else said, we're gonna have to spend money to restore it to a new surface after construction anyway, so.
This area where you were talking about parking buses, the bus parking strip?
Yes.
Are those lined up on one side? Is that the way, is that the vision that you have?
What we would typically, well, you couldn't wind them up on one side, but we typically see is that when you have a large event, if somebody's directing traffic out there, you basically park them side by side in the lanes, and, you know, the-
Okay, so essentially, if the event is going on, those basically are closed off to everybody but those buses at that point?
Yes.
Well, your intention is to have that side of, that's supposed to be closed off. That is not a, that's basically bus only.
There's a gate, there's a gate here, and then there's a gate down here, so you can, you can close off this entire two lanes and park, park a whole mess of buses on there.
Well, no, I'm thinking from, on a regular daily operation, we need to make sure emphatic that that is not a drop-off point for students, it's gonna be for-
No, it's, it's one way, and I, and I think that parents will get the, the only, the only bus that actually is, is coming in here to drop off is special needs. So, and that can be, that can be a kind of a control thing, too.
So if you think about the flow of traffic, is it, are you thinking Cedar to Washington? Or the, or the other way?
On, on this, on this side, you could, you could travel from Cedar to Washington.
But you can go both ways on that side, right?
You can go both ways on this side. On this, on this lane, we're thinking that you would go from Cedar to Washington. Although, although you could pull in for, for, for this parking, you could pull in and park and go back out, because it's basically, once the gate is closed, when school starts or during the summertime, it's basically a parking lot that you pull in and then pull out of.
And the traffic coming out to Cedar, the other side, because I guess this would be going to Washington, this would be one way?
This would, you, you, it's right turn.
To the right?
Yes.
And when you go back to the other side, what's that?
I would think that at this side, it would probably be right turn also. It may, it may be right turn with a, a, from, from, you know, depending on the, the time of day, it may be right turn only, you know, maybe on the weekends or something, it's-
Do we anticipate signals there, or we're gonna have to control that with, with guard?
I think that, I think at this point, you know, we, we would assume that you would still be using your security personnel to direct traffic.
Did the city say anything about a de-acceleration lane, westbound on Cedar pulling right turn into the lot? Because I could see that potentially backing up.
No, they did not. Well, if you're, if you're dropping a student off, you would not be pulling in this way.
Oh, well, you may not supposed to do that. I think it's highly likely.
I would think that, you know, yes, as much as, as much as you can educate people or try to control people, I would assume that people are still gonna pull up out here and drop their students off on Cedar. Or, or over here. The other thing is, you know, the bus stop is over here, so, you know, that's, that's a great flow, and then, and then from the parking area.
And there's a bus stop right in front of the building, too, isn't there?
No.
Seven A X used to stop right in front.
What, is, what is it, just to the?
Right in front of the building?
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Is it, would, would there make sense to-
Not a school bus stop.
Oh, no, no.
No, no, no.
The RTA. Would it make sense to the angle of the two slant walks, would it make sense to move them slightly closer to the driveways? I'm just thinking for the students.
Sure.
Okay. Because I know student behavior, they're gonna take the path of, path of least resistance to the parking lot.
There may be, there may just be a crosswalk.
Exactly. I'm seeing a rough advance. Yeah.
We would, we would just pave all of that.
Just paint the grave, pave it all, painting it. I hope Sam Bill didn't have an aneurysm, I hope, so. Are we, I guess, are we ready for, what's next on the agenda, before we go to the minutia, I guess?
Just the exterior.
Exterior. That's right.
Control the, you can do, you can do-
I can, where, do I use these guys? Just use the, this button, yeah. When, we're now going to look at, we have some perspectives. We have what we call precedent, which are images that may help people visualize what we were thinking. So we'll, we'll start by looking at some precedents. Our precedents include both elements of the existing building, as well as other pieces of architecture that we found that we thought were relevant to our project here in Cleveland University Heights. We started looking at, when we go back to the plan, especially the second floor, when we made modifications to classroom space, which, if we look at the second, second and third floor, most of the program is dedicated to academic core. We started to think about daylighting and providing some sort of natural light to those spaces, because most of them overlook large assembly spaces on the east, that being student dining, and on the west side, that being the competition gym. So, we started to look at elements of clear stories, and in the current building, which I believe is the scene shop, is where the existing clear stories are in the building, and they were covered up. And I believe initially that was the vocational-
Yeah.
-or the shop area when it was built in 1926.
Sorry, what are clear stories?
Oh, clear stories are, when we go to precedent, a clear story is, is an element very much like this. I guess this room could potentially have a clear story right up here. If you think visually about what, what kind of space we're in right now, it allows natural light to come into the building from, from that location. And, and what's nice, when you notice, when you notice the, the direction on the roof plan, it allows for northern light, which is the most optimal in regards to providing daylighting for those classrooms. So that's, that's sort of where, where we started when we started looking at precedents. We looked at elements like this in the building. We also started to look at what you can't see, but as you enter the building from the north, you're, you're able to see those sort of, those great arch windows that were, were chopped up, and I believe maybe the 70s. So that, those kinds of things we were looking at. When we start to talk about this building, the other thing that, that we've always talked about is, is the fact that the building's brick. And those are some elements that we thought were important in not only the additions that we attached to 1926, but also the additions that are, are back beyond that line that we talked about where the architecture could be modified. So we were thinking about an overall approach to the building. And that's where we'll start to look at some, some things like that. This was, this, for, for those that don't know, these, these drawings that we're showing right here are from the original 1926 package of drawings, and you can see some of the elements that you'll start to see incorporated into, into the new building. We start to look at, at elements of brick that allows for openings that are larger than, than 1926, yet maintaining a scale. This is, this is an idea of, you know, providing some sort of opening in mass. We, we looked at, at buildings like this to see how we introduce natural light with an idea of scale in regards to openings. This building, you can see how they address that in regards to providing verticality to the facades. This, this, this building right over here, we thought this was really intriguing in regards to the clear story. And this is what we mean by clear story, and I'm sure that this is facing north, so all the light is coming in there. And once again, you're noticing that we're showing sort of brick buildings, and how they relate to, to architecture like that. This is, this is another, another building where we, you know, we wanted to introduce some, some, some sort of large glass openings in the student dining, just so that you can see how it relates to the existing, existing context of a building that's more traditional. Don't, you know, these, these spaces are, are ideas that, that we, we kept in our back pocket in regards to how maybe competition gyms and everything flow together. Our structure is much simpler than this, you know, we're not, we're not advocating anything like this in regards to structure, because to be honest, this stuff right here, you know, budget-wise, I think, I think my friends two, two seats down would really have a heart attack. But we're, we're looking more at, at the quality of the space and the idea of, of the continuation from one space to the other.
Making the, making the walls, potentially making some of the walls between the spaces, maybe even at the upper level, more transparent so that you actually can experience, you know, more of the building while staying in one area without, rather than just having four walls that you're looking at all the time.
And then, this, this became more relevant, more relevant when we didn't make the modification to the plan, but, but what, what we liked about this, and once again, don't pay attention to the roof, but what we did like was the ability to maintain the existing wall, especially when you go to the, the first and the second floor, and I'm gonna go back to the plan and show you where we were thinking. When you go to the, you know, we're, we're talking about this wall right here, trying to maintain as much of that as we can in regard to the integrity of the existing building. So when you're inside these spaces, you can see the existing brickwork, and you can see the existing wood at one time was an exterior facade, especially on the, on the second floor. So that's why, you know, that's why we started to look at, at what we call precedent. So those kinds of things, you know, this, this idea of providing daylighting, and we even, you know, we even went to the second, you know, we even thought about how do we do this in regards to, of course, the budget that we have. And we have a scheme where we use SimpleJoyce, which, which is, which is really intriguing because in a larger, in a lot of large, large volume spaces like student dining and that kind of stuff, where you want an open floor plate, you're relying on special structural systems. So we think that in regards to the economy, that there's a, there's a way to do this. Now, we still have to, of course, vent cost and budget and everything, and right now, we already went through iterations of where this can be modified in regards to that. With, with that, with, with all these images, we started to look at, you know, how, how does this thing look in regards to volume and in regards to solid void? You know, I, I'll, I'll say this, you know, we, we have windows shown, the, the study didn't get into- didn't get into, you know, proportions of mullions and that kind of stuff, but we do have volume shown and ideas of, of direction, so that's sort of what this is. And we'll start, of course, with, with, with what we had all seen before, and then this was, this image, image didn't change that much. We started to work on, you know, things like, you know, how do we address adding, adding windows to the lower level without it, it impeding on, on the architecture? And we think that we went in the right direction in regards to that. So you can, you can sort of see how that, that those things were framed. We, we started to look at, you know, what happens at the entries? You know, how do we relate these entries to, to this and, and maintain that, that architecture along Cedar? So that's, that's sort of the direction. Then we had the line of, of distinction between what we call the, you know, the 1926 additions and the rest of the building. You can see how, how functions started to dictate forms of buildings. These, these are the lines of clear stories that we were talking about. When we get to a, a later perspective, you'll see, which is what we call bird's eye view, how that looks down on it. In regards to, to these wings, we thought that even though you can't quite see it, but you see the rhythm of windows here, we thought that the rhythm of windows would continue on this simple form. And that's why we were pretty, pretty consistent in what this form should be, because it's about, you know, the idea of academic core spaces and classrooms. So we tried to, to maintain that, that, that sort of portion of windows and openings. As you progress along the site towards the north, you start to see the change in grade. You start to see how the building functions inside. You have elements of, of public space, which is where we were talking about daylighting. You have other elements of service, which we're trying to keep the form simple. And then you have other elements that are large teaching spaces. This is the CTE auto, auto tech space. This is the, the gym, and then this, this is the pool. And we'll talk a little bit about this element there. When you get to the, the northwest perspective, you start to see the same sort of idea of elements, you know, trying to keep, keep things similar on both sides so that the building has a cohesive look. When you get down to this area, there's some sort of entry into what would be the, the PE, the PE wing, and then you have the pool, and you have this volume, which, you know, you can start to see how we're trying to, to pull this volume and relate it to this. This, this element sort of is, tells sort of the, the picture of the story, because you can see, you know, each, each function is, is, is shown. You can see the reasoning for the daylighting into the classrooms. We, we, we looked at where this should stop in regards to the building. We also, we also felt that, which this image, you can't quite see it, but one of the moves that really helped us out was providing a constant roof form here that not only allows, you know, the building to, to shed, to shed water, it also simplified a lot. So we were able to do that. You start to see the idea of, you know, when you go back to that 1926 images that we have, and, and I don't think we have, hang on one second, we have all the elevations. You start to see the idea that this building has that idea of the colonnade that, that was sitting right here, and you start to see how we're looking at, how does this building look on Washington in regards to symmetry and in regards to the, the central form of this? And you can, you can once again see how we're developing these ideas into, into reading much like what we have in the 1926 building. So that's, that's sort of where we, that's sort of where we are right now. A lot of it had to do with how we're, we're pulling all of this together.
If you think about, if you think about the building, although you, although you really kind of experience it from the, the bird's eye view, the, the roof and how it, the roof is a very important part of this building, and unlike the, unlike the 1926 building that had this, you know, kind of superior ornate element that was in the center of it, you know, we, we don't have, we don't have that. So we think that, you know, the strategies that we're trying to employ, if you think about daylighting is, and Jim's gonna talk a little, Jim's gonna talk about the HVAC central plant, but if you, daylighting is a very, very important part of this. We, we are required for lead, some of the lead points to, to achieve, I think it's 75% of the academic spaces have to have, have daylighting. But it's not just that. If, you know, the more daylighting you have, there's an impact, there's a kind of, there's a, an economic impact in terms of lowering your energy costs for artificial lighting and for cooling, your cooling load, but there's also an impact in terms of, of teacher retention and how students react, you know, in terms of their health, all those things. So there's an intrinsic kind of thing that you don't really, can't really appreciate. And because the building is large and because it's compact, as, as John said, a lot of the spaces, you're unable to provide daylighting in a window, so you have to provide daylighting in some other form. So that's why we've, we've considered the, the clear stories.
Would we like to open it up for questions? Before we go to the HVAC, would you prefer to kind of go through some of the questions on the exterior and maybe even back to the plans first? Or should we continue the presentation?
I think, I got, I got floor by floor, so I mean HVAC might, I'm not sure, I think that's, I, I'm, I only have a couple of questions HVAC already, but I got a lot of, I got a lot of other stuff. HVAC, I got simple questions, so.
Well, I'm, I'm inclined to have the presentation and then ask the questions.
Okay. Great.
And, you know, we've got, we've made a commitment in terms of audience participation, so, you know, we, if we, I don't know how much time we're talking about, but I would think that going through that is probably worth it.
We, we don't have too much more presentations.
That I would, I would say, let's do it.
Thank you. Okay. We're, we're gonna have a presentation on Jim McMillan from Karpinski on the HVAC, but we also are gonna have Taj, who's gonna come up, who's handles the existing systems, who's also been very active with the, with the engineers. So Jim, do we need to turn the lights down, Jim, or?
I don't believe so.
We probably have to make sure he has his mic.
That's fine. For, for this discussion is, we're zeroing in on, on the central plant itself. All the, the HVAC systems outside of the central plant are gonna be the same for all three. A lot of that is driven by the function of the spaces. The, the naditorium is gonna have its special system, the, the large gyms and the, and the auditorium, those, those systems are driven by the function of the space. And then, as Gary mentioned, the floor-to-floor height in the academic spaces sort of drives the system. So outside of the central plant, the systems are exactly the same. And so all we're talking about is, is the central plant and the efficiency of the, and the cost of the, the central plant, the source of the heating and the cooling. And with that, the, there's a detailed life cycle cost analysis that was given to the board, and it was out in the lobby, so I'll, I'll give this a very general discussion, then as, depending where the questions go later, we'll get as detailed as, as the evening takes us. But I won't get into that much detail until then. So there were three systems that are being evaluated. System one is a geothermal system, which is 100% geothermal. The system is completely heated and cooled by a geothermal system located underneath the ball fields and potentially additional parking. The second system is what we call a hybrid geothermal, which is probably 50% heated and cooled by geothermal, and then the rest is heated and cooled by supplemental systems, boilers and, and electric cooling for heating, and the boilers. And alternative three is a boiler-chiller system, natural gas boilers, very high efficient, and then a high efficient chiller system, which is, each of them have their, their pros and cons. We had Ozang Gilbain do a cost estimate, so the, the first, central plant first cost, those costs are only for the central plant, not for the rest of the building. And the, the lowest first cost was the boiler-chiller system at the bottom. The hybrid system was about 50% more, $800,000 more, and the geothermal system was approximately twice of the, the initial first cost of the boiler-chiller system.
And what, what caused, what, what creates the cost between the?
The biggest cost is the underground geothermal field.
Gotcha.
Yes. And then, then we ran what we called a total life cycle cost. It's the total cost of operating the system for 35 years, and that's.
That includes the central plant first cost?
Right. Right. So it's, so that life cycle cost is the central plant first cost and the operation of the entire building. It does not include the cost of the HVAC system outside of the central plant. So that life cycle cost will actually be, I don't know, $10 million more than that, because we, we don't have the cost in there of the, the HVAC system outside of the central plant. But that would be the same number added to all the three alternates. So the change in cost between the three would be the same. So this life cycle cost is the total operation of the entire building and the first cost of the central plant only. And so what we have is, and I'll explain as we look at the next chart in a minute, is the life cycle cost has the geothermal system over 25 years having a total cost less than the other two. The other two options are almost the same. They're within less than a percent of each other, within a margin of error on the other two, they're almost tied.
Jim, you just said 25, but the document says 35, which did you mean?
I meant 35, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And the, and again, the total life cycle cost is all the utility costs, it's the replacement cost of equipment, so there's different equipment in each of the systems. So we said at year 25 of the 35, we're replacing some equipment in one system and not in the other. There's the utility costs, the, the lower potential utility costs, which we'll talk about next, and that's what adds up to total life cycle cost. So if you can do the next one. This is a life cycle cost analysis showing, the blue line is, the, the bottom solid line is the life cycle cost of the boiler-chiller system, the dotted line is the hybrid system, and the dashed line is the geo system. And what really drives this is the projected utility costs. Right now, natural gas costs are at historic, modern-day lows. They are, 10 years ago, natural gas was selling for double what it is today. So because of that, we had to look at what is the projections for, for utility cost increases or inflation rates over the next 35 years? So what we went to was an organization called the, the United States Energy Information Administration, and they predicted electric and gas utility rates for this area, the inflation rate prediction for each over 40 years.
This is their report.
And it, it predicted, they estimate or predict the natural gas to increase at 5.5% over 35 or over 40 years, and electric rates to increase at 2.5%. So the, the gas rate will, according to this prediction, rise faster. So that's why at the beginning half, the, the system that weighs heavily on the gas heating is, has the lower life cycle cost, but as you get near the end, with the change in, or utility rates, the all-electric system, which is the geo system, is probably 90% electric for the building, then that, in the end, becomes more efficient. That's the real crux of this, as far as the life cycle cost, utility cost analysis goes, is the predicted utility rates increases. And there's, there's people out there gambling millions of dollars in 401K money on what's happening right here, that we're just going with what the, the US government is, you know, predicting over time. Did I have another one here? And then the final part is the energy use intensity, which is more of a sustainable discussion. And this is the existing Cleveland Heights High School, uses about 178,000 kilobtuus per year. This is just saying that these are relative numbers with the amount of energy per square foot totally used per year. So existing high schools, very high. The Sustainable Working Group and their committee, they use the term, a building in the 34 to 40 range would be considered usable, is the term that was used. If you look at the Energy Star, which is a national US Department of Energy website, in this area, a building that gets, that is 99% better than every other building in the area would have a energy intensity of about 35.5 kilobtuus per square foot. There's a net zero elementary school building in Kentucky that is running currently, this is a, a case study I looked up, at 18, and then our current analysis, depending on the system, is between 20 and 60. And in our current analysis in the, in the detailed report, there are relative numbers where one is, you know, the one we have in there has, the geo system's closer to 20 BTUs or kilobtuus. That's more of a relative range, the, the analysis isn't done. I'm not gonna say that when we're 100% done with our design and the pool is designed and the kitchen equipment is designed, that the number won't go up, but the relative nature between one system and the other will be, one will be, the geo system was half of the hybrid system and 1/3 of the boiler-chiller system. Those relative numbers will be the same. So with that said, the, from a pure financial perspective, on the 35-year life, the geo system with the predictions has a lower life cycle cost. And, but the boiler-chiller system is half the cost on the first cost. That from a financial perspective. And on both of them, comfort will be the same. There's not a discussion on comfort or inter equality or health of the students or acoustics or noise or anything like that. All that within the building will be identical for all the systems, and there's not an issue with comfort.
Why does a hybrid system have almost the same lifespan cost and that much more expensive than the non-hybrid chiller system? Since it's a hybrid, wouldn't I, I would expect a better rate of return on investment? Why isn't it?
Well, because it's a hybrid system, we, what we did was we waited and used more of the gas in the first half of its life and more electric heat in the second half of its life. When, when the, because it's a hybrid system, we have the opportunity to use, say, all-electric heat in the fall and spring, but when the gas rates are low, we set it up to use the gas in the fall and the spring during the lower gas rates of its life. And then as it flipped over the other way, where electric was low, so we, we used the best of both conditions. Since gas rates are extremely low, the hybrid system, we, we set it up to use more gas in the first half of 35 years and more electric in the second half of its 35.
So it's more, it's more of a cautionary, if, if something spikes, it gives you more reactive ability?
Right. Except in the, in the very peak summer and peak winter, you're, you're, you can't use 100% gas, because it's only set up to use maybe half gas, half natural gas.
Does the hybrid require the same size well field as the full geothermal?
No, it's about half the size.
And then, I guess my last question in regards to that would be, because we're using the east field from, for a construction component, does, how does that impact production, the construction schedule? I mean, when do you put the well field in relative to the rest of the, the project?
Well, I would say one thing I'll let you answer is, 10 years ago, we worked on the Bay Village Middle School, and that's a geothermal system, and the geo field was put in first, and on top of the geo field was all the staging. They had stacks and stacks of block mixing, all the masonry, all the cement, everything, so there was a major staging area on top of the field after it went in. So, so that's something that can be done, so I'll let you respond to that.
Yeah, we agree, it's, it's not an issue.
Well, I was talking from a timing standpoint, not, not an actual weight.
It's not a timing.
Okay, so it wouldn't, so it's not an issue, okay, that was, that was, so in reality, it ends up being the, the decision for the board ostensibly is, do you spend $2 million more upfront? Is pretty much from looking at the charts, that's the principal, the principal debate is, do you spend $2 million upfront, or?
Yeah, I, I asked Taj Steig, the district's lead tradesman, to come this evening, and, you know, I think he has some important insights that I'd like him to share from their perspective. They've had a chance to work closely with the engineers, take a look at these systems. So Taj, before we take any more questions, I, I'd really like the board to hear some of those, some of the comments that he has.
Well, as Steve mentioned, we had gotten an opportunity to, to meet with the engineers and, and, and look at a smaller version of a hybrid system over at private school. And by looking at it, we, we had done. And by looking at it, we had done our own investigations as we learned that some of the options of the HVAC systems that were being, being considered. And when we looked at the full geothermal system and realized that there were going to be over 390 wells drilled, we kind of questioned some of the issues of the close proximity of those wells when, from reading and doing our investigation, found out that a proper system, well should be spaced at least 20 feet apart in order to get proper use of that area. Also, earlier, when I first started getting involved in this, we were given the opportunity to go to Ravenna High School, where they do have a full geo system. But noticed that, that by them installing this equipment, they installed the equipment in, in a fashion that the OFSC kind of kept everything very tight and very close and not very user-friendly, including putting individual heat pumps up in the ceilings of the school to run to classrooms, which made it very, very difficult to service. In fact, they had to have an outside contractor every six weeks come in to service those pieces of equipment. So as we went along, we found several things. The, the fact, the size of the pumps that are being used for the geothermal field are quite large, between 20 and 30 horsepower motors to bring the liquid up into the, into the facility and then pump it out through. We also noticed that, that our staff would require more training because basically our staff is designed to deal with a boiler-chiller system as is. So we would be learning a whole new field here, and that would take some time. Again, some of the things we realized that if we go with a hybrid system, we're going to have to keep two types of parts on hand for whatever system would happen to fail at any given time. And it will through the years. And then we talked about with the hybrid field, the ice tanks that would be used. It's a system that's used to, during the summer, to create ice during the cool night evenings so that when there was a high-peak load of air conditioning, they could use the ice to help cool the system down. And we realized that had to be buried in the ground also in the field, and it has to be about five feet underground. The, the system as a whole, it was impressive, but also told, we were also told that if we go with the hybrid system with the, the ice storage, we would be proverbial the guinea pig in this area because there was nothing close by to us that we could look at to see what, see how that functioned. Again, if any of this equipment should happen to fail, the ice tank, we'll have to dig up the field and repair it. But the biggest thing that we, we looked at is the space and size of the central plant and any air handling rooms. We have always been one to, we've been told in the past that the PM system is something we need to start right off at the very beginning. And if the areas that we have with, with all this equipment are tight and compact because of regulations, the PM system, the PM program will, will be hard-pressed to be enacted and.
I'm sorry, what's a PM program?
PM, preventive maintenance program. We, if you can't work on a piece of equipment and it's not readily or user-friendly, the tendencies are that the system has, it's harder to get that PM program started. So with that, we were looking at, again, we got to look at a private school, and the way they had it set up was very open, very easy to maintain. In fact, with this system, the central plant actually had the pumps out in the open where they could be worked on, and the room actually had an elevator that you could take the equipment out of. So I know this is something that is not the norm, but it is something from our, our perspective, the trades, grounds, the maintenance department, that we need to look at. In order to do a good preventive maintenance program, you have to be able to maintain the equipment easily. And that's, that is the biggest thing that, of what any, any system you choose, if you can't get to the equipment easily, it makes it that much harder to maintain. So again, I can't stress enough, enough, when we, the engineer or design the building, that they design these, the central plant and any air handling room to make it friendly enough for us to get in there and do what we need to do to, to do the repairs for whichever program we go with.
Yes.
So when we, when we talk about the PM, is the assumption that the PM is going to be the same cost for any one of these three options?
No, we have, we have the lifecycle cost of different.
They're in here?
Yeah.
Yes.
In the life cycle, correct. Can anyone speak to the issue that you raised about, anyone else speak to the issue about the number of wells and the spacing in between and whether it's possible on our site for full geothermal?
Yeah, we've laid it out, and it is, and it is possible to fit it on that ball field area. And the question of whether they're close or far apart, or making sure that they're where we designed them to be, I mean, that's just part of the design that the contractor has to follow. So if we, if we design something that's 20 feet on center, that's the way it's going to go in. I mean, there's, there's not going to, the contractor on their own isn't going to put it in something different than that, just like any other piece of equipment. So, so we have laid it out that it will fit on there.
And what about the issue that was raised about the OSFC having some expectations around a smaller footprint for this equipment? Did I phrase that correctly?
Yes, what that's true is you've already heard about the square footage and, and Gary, jump in any time here, but how I see this is, the OSFC is, or OFCC is very driven by square footage, you know, so it's.
So overall, square footage?
Right, so it's got to be squeezed somewhere, so it's squeezing mechanical space because whatever is not in mechanical space can go into programming space. So it's just that constant pressure where the private school we looked at didn't have that pressure.
Can I just comment that that pressure for us isn't 100%? We are following the, the rules and regs of the OSFC, but we have a lot, what we call, call locally funded initiatives. And part of that was some of the mechanical spaces that we weren't. So we're, we won't get, we won't get their co-funding if we build bigger spaces, but the, we are building a lot of bigger spaces, a lot of spaces that are not co-funded. We always planned on that.
And Ravenna, for example, might have had, would have had much more OFCC funding.
Yes.
Much higher percentage.
Yes, where they were forced into doing some things that.
Okay.
If we think about the geothermal system, that's costing twice as much as the others, basically, it's because it's, we'd have to put it on, on the ball field? We have to?
No. Wherever we go on site, wherever it would go on site, it would be.
So there's not really additional cost if we put it out on the ball field?
Correct. Right. The additional cost is just the cost of installing the underground system, which is almost 400, 300, or 400-foot deep.
Oh, really? That's pretty deep.
Yes.
This is a, this is a closed loop system also, so that, you know, the fluid isn't, it's not going anywhere. It's staying, it's, it's staying inside the, inside the piping. So as, as Jim said, you know, it could, it could go anywhere. I mean, if we had a, you know, there's the potential, you could potentially put part of it underneath, you know, your driveways and everything else because that's not going to affect the operation and your.
But if it's 400 feet deep, I can see it. I was thinking it'd be much closer to the surface.
Well, it starts with some expense.
Yes.
When do we have to make a decision? I mean, we have a whole lot of decisions. When, when, is, obviously, but I'm looking more specifically from a design schematic and the whole nine yards. When, we've got a lot of latitude on some of these components, but when is, we're in that decision-making process, when does this decision have to be made?
I, I would, I would think that we would like a decision by the, sometime after the 30th, once we've looked at the, the entire estimate in some way. Because once we start DD, we, we should know which direction we're going.
And DD is for the audience?
Design development.
Design development.
Which is the next, which is the phase that follows schematic design. And I, I, maybe Jim, the question is, is, there is, there is a, an area in the building that's designated for central plant. And in terms of the amount of equipment, space required for central plant equipment, do you, do you have any idea of the differences between the three systems in terms of the overall square footage that's required?
Not specific square footage, but in order of the systems we had listed, one, two, and three, the geo, the hybrid, and the central plant, the boiler-chiller, the smallest central plant is the geo, and the hybrid is the middle, because a big part of it is underground. Another part of the geothermal system is you eliminate some outdoor equipment. So there's going to be some large outdoor equipment with the other two systems that would be on the side of the building, most likely towards the ball field. So that equipment goes away. So aesthetically, the ambient noise from the equipment running during the summertime would be eliminated.
Yeah, numbers.
Does the audience have this full?
There were, yes, that full document was available out at front.
So that was one of those questions you had. It said, "Non-economic considerations. The hybrid geothermal and the boiler-chiller had outdoor cooling towers for heat rejection." Define outdoor tower.
400 feet.
That's why, exactly. Are we just talking like a rooftop unit? You can put.
No, I would say for the boiler, for the boiler-chiller system, it would probably be as large as this high use space right here.
Okay.
Wall-to-wall, that high.
So it's not like it's a three-story water tower? It's more just a, it's like a giant HVAC unit?
Six feet or something.
It's not like a power plant.
And it would, okay.
Is, I guess this is a question for Fred and Scott. Is the, as you guys are budgeting forward, are you putting in, are you allowing $2 million for geothermal? Are you planning not on geothermal at this point? Are you, where, where does that money fit in your estimates? Are you?
We provided the initial, some of the initial pricing. So we'll, if it's geo, we'll have a line that says geo, and the other one will say conventional, and have to decide which, you know, which slot you want to go in.
Okay. I don't know if I asked this before or not. The well field for the hybrid versus a well field for a full geo, is one bigger than the other, or are they both the same?
Yes, about half.
Okay, that's, I thought, I wanted to make sure, okay. It made sense, but I wanted to double-check because with my luck, it would be the same size. Besides Ravenna, who else is doing a geothermal, a school system that's using a geothermal as a, as their system?
In, as far as school systems, the Orville City Schools, little south of here, they have three buildings that are all geothermal. Niles, which is an urban district near Youngstown, has three buildings all geothermal. Their high school is, I believe, over 200, around 200,000 square feet, I believe. So it's a large, you know, high school with large auditoriums and gymnasiums similar to this.
Anyone, anyone in Cuyahoga County?
Yeah, the, as I mentioned, the Bay Village Middle School. The, the private school we visited was Feux-Mizrahi in Beechwood. I, I don't know all the systems, the ones I haven't worked on. The Cuyahoga County Public Library, most of their new, North Olmsted, Strongsville, Solon library systems are all geothermal. The downtown Cleveland, there's Trinity Cathedral, not the historic cathedral, but the rest of the facility is geothermal, as is the Cleveland State Administration Building where the president provost and all those folks are at, that's geothermal. There's a history.
I was just looking for the comp, yeah, you know, someone who's already done this and hey, what's your, you know, aside from the, we, obviously Ravenna, we got some good and bad feedback, but looking for real comps, that way we, that way we're not putting this in for 400,000 square feet and we're the only ones who, you know, in our region have done it, so.
Eric, the difference between this, this system and Ravenna and other, I would say earlier systems is that this is a central plant that is really kind of creating the chilled fluid or the, or the heated fluid, and then distributing it. Whereas in the other systems, you're distributing the fluid and there's an, the heat pump is actually, the individual heat pumps all over the place are kind of doing the exchange and doing that. So in terms of.
I'm glad you said that. So this is not proposing that individual heat pump?
That's correct.
Right.
It's, you know, so it's a big, there is a significant difference, and in some ways it probably affects the cost somewhat of, of that. But it's, I think in terms of maintenance, it's probably less maintenance in the central plant scenario.
And there's some, like the natatorium, that is not going to be on the geothermal system. That's a unique piece of equipment that's specific to the natatorium. There might be something else depending on the vote, the vocational program. There might be something unique in there just based on function. The kitchen system, there might be something unique there that is, that may not be on the geo system. So there are some unique spaces that, you know, the geo is not driving this whole thing here. It's going to work, and like I said, the biggest example is the natatorium. That is a very unique system that may have some interface with it, but it's not, it's going to be different than the rest of the, the building.
Should we, should we go? The last item is a discussion on some of the CTE spaces. And Gary, you're going to walk us through that?
As I mentioned before, we made some horizontal moves with some of the, some of the CTE spaces on this level. Health, clinical health, exercise science, and pharmacy. Over here, obviously, engineering tech is here. Computer networking moved up to the, up to the cedar level. Culinary is no longer in the program. That's the directive that we were given by the cabinet. However, with FCS and potentially in the future, the elimination of computer networking, there would be space available for culinary arts if that's a decision, that's a decision for the board.
Gary, real quick, I have a question.
Sure.
Right, this juncture, I guess. If the, is it possible to put, if we continue with the, go with the schematic here, is it possible to run the, when the walls, well, there's no walls, we just have studs, can we run the utility lines for, say, a culinary program and just have it in the wall? So that way, if in the next six months or next five years, we wanted to swap it, what, is it easy, is it easier to design it and put the utilities in now and then close the wall, and then if we want to change our minds in 10 years, is that doable?
I would, I would suggest if that's your thought, that, you know, there will be some, there will be some utility stubs that would, would be in the wall, but there is also going to be a lot of, there would also be a lot of stubs that would be coming up through the floor. That's a second-floor space. So if, if you have sanitary available, if you have water available, if you have those utilities available, it'd be fairly, when I say simple, but you, you could. but you, you could core-drill the floor and run a lineup. You know, if we knew for sure that we were going to have a bank of some equipment, we could, we could certainly make stub outs in the walls also to accommodate that.
We'd have to, we'd have to allow some dollars for that, though.
Oh, yeah.
It changes the complexity of the alternate, so.
Okay, I'm not throwing it out there, but it's a way to, to give us that, so that way, if it's five years downline, and it's like, oh, we want to do it, but the, to run all those utilities becomes cross-prohibitive. If it's, you know, that's, that's hedging a bit, I guess.
I think if, you know, if, if you make a decision, and we are, let's say, in the middle of design development, we would probably just change the documents if it, if it fits within, you know, it's a budget consideration also.
Right.
And that would, that would be what was, what was built. However, if you're saying you may make a decision two years, you know, one year, two years, three years, four years from now, if it's, if it's two years from now, the building is going to be under construction.
Right.
So you could, you can make those alterations. But if you're saying post-construction, then for sure, we would probably want to make some accommodation, because the other thing is, if you're running, you know, the sanitary line would have to be sized to accommodate whatever equipment is anticipated and that kind of stuff. But, no, that's, that's certainly doable, but it would, the sooner we have direction on that, the better it would be.
Well, I understand. I'd rather spend $50,000 today, so that way, that gives them an option as opposed to having to spend 10 times that in the future, so.
As I said before, too, audio and video is situated here with their support spaces adjacent to both the auditorium and music. Business is over here, along with the school store.
Can I actually ask something about those?
Sure.
It's a minor point, but on the last plan, where audio and video tech, that was just open space, I mean, there was no, nothing there, right? It was just, and I believe, was the original plan to have windows there that looked out over the gym at one point, or did I hallucinate that, or is that a possibility? In any case, what I guess I'm wondering is, what is, by putting those classrooms along the left of the auditorium there, does that affect the view either from the gym looking up or from those classrooms looking down? I mean, is there still, you talk about seeing different parts of the building.
There's the potential to have what I would call views into the, into the gymnasium, you know, from those spaces, you know. Part of the question is, is with, with video, is do you, you know, is that an advantage or a disadvantage in terms of...
And audio.
In audio. Obviously, and I think I put, you know, the caveat in there, that we've done major spaces that are acoustically separated, you know, and so that, you know, there's always a concern, but, but, you know, that's, you know, to separate those two spaces, the gym and that, or even the, any of the spaces above, is, is, is a part of the design, so that's not an issue. I think, I think the benefit of having these spaces so that there can be some kind of participation and cooperation and joint, joint use is, really is the key to kind of aligning those. And I think in some of the, even in the, some of the, in the workshops that were developed, I think some of the little schemes that showed, you know, you know, some kind of relationship between those spaces and, and music and, and the other parts of the arts. AutoTech is still down here, and as I said before, the second high base CTE space, we've kind of shown it here. Depending on how far, depending on how far we get in terms of it being an alternate, we would, we would develop this as, in the plan, just like the other space, or just like it was originally. It requires some kind of reconfiguration of some of the support spaces and that, but we think that, you know, it's, it's basically, if you think about structure, it's basically adding probably another couple bays of structure to that, to the end of the building, and there is enough space on site for it. Criminal studies is here, again, still adjacent to where the wrestling room is, because they use that for some of their exercises and some of their development. And that's, that's pretty much about it for CTE. Currently, right now, we're, one of the directives that we got from the, the cabinet was to try and, and condense spaces as much as possible. So we've taken, tried to take, you know, maybe some of the support spaces and probably reduce those somewhat, but we're still within probably about 5% or less of what the net square footage is in the POR. And we'll say this about, about these spaces down here, there is, there is an FCS classroom that's called Fashion and Sewing. I don't know right now if there is actually kind of a curriculum or instruction for fashion, but it's, it's actually part of FCS, but it's aligned with cosmetology, because, you know, cosmetology and fashion kind of go together, so that, that could be a program. But there is a classroom here. The other thing is that there is a classroom here that is called a learning center, which is part of, it's part of PE. It's kind of, you know, it's used in, it's used in the evenings or after-school for remedial kind of attention to students, testing, that kind of stuff. But during the daytime, there certainly would be, it could be used as program space for these classroom areas that are down here. So, you know, it's more trying to look at, you know, cooperatively using the spaces that you have, because obviously, we're trying to bring the utilization of those spaces up as much as possible also. That's where we're at.
Any questions, any other questions at this point?
I got a lot of detailed questions, but do you want to take a break for a second?
Here, there's a couple things that we still have the audience go to.
Right.
Okay, so what we're going to do is that we didn't put out a sign-up sheet. How many people in the audience wants, want to speak?
We have a question.
Let's see, one, two, three, four, five. Okay. The question that I have, you want to do it before or after?
I want to do it before.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break, and you can get ready. What we're going to do when we come back is that we're going to have a couple more opportunities for questions from the board, and then we're going to hear from the audience. Okay? Okay. Are you guys ready? We got a few questions from the board.
A few? I got pages, man. I got mine a quick, though.
We think that it's really...
So Eric?
Yes. I need, so. All right. I got a whole bunch of little questions here. First one, on the basement level, or Washington level, I'm sorry, you got to get in the nomenclature. The Washington level, so let me start by saying, I like the, I think the floor plan, it's, this is, I like this a lot better than the last one. I like the changes, the bathrooms, the second floor, I like it a lot. Most of my questions here on the interior are a little nickel-and-dime stuff. The first one, on the basement level, Washington level, are we still having to have that egress to the courtyard from the basement level? I'm noticing on the left staircase, is that gray corridor?
We're, we're, we're pretty sure that we're going to be able to get rid of that.
Okay, cool.
All right, but, you know, that's still, we, while we talked zoning, we haven't talked to the, to the building officials yet, so that still needs to be verified. That's why we continue to maintain it, and it must have just gotten erased on the other side.
And then my question would be on the white space next to it, which would be...
Can you point, John, like you did last time, for the audience?
The white space next to it's marked as unexcavated, but I believe there's some, I believe it is actually finished right now, or there's some corridors in there or something.
There's a corridor there, but that's really, most of that area there is about five feet tall.
Okay, so it's really...
Yeah, it's really unex, it's like the other side.
It's junk, basically.
It would, it would basically be zoned off and inaccessible.
It's not worth the hassle, is it?
That's correct, because you have to start to think about shoring.
You'd have to, you'd have to underpin the foundation of the building.
Say no more. The southeastern staircase, is there any way to change the geometry of the stairwell so the, we could have the door exit to the west versus the south?
He's talking about this corner.
No, 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 the south, southwest, your other southwest.
Southwest.
There you go.
Well, we started to look at that, and we have to really do a section through the stair. There is that possibility.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, is there, I guess, why are the stands for the basketball arena not centered on the court? Because we've, we've got like sort of the, the runover space.
It's a little offset there.
Is that because of...
Depends on what happens with these two points of egress. I think what happened, this, this, this may have just slid over, and while we're, we haven't really resolved this area and this area yet.
The, and I'll keep going north of that. You have the lobby. The suggestion might be you have an office, then you have concessions, then you have boosters. You might put the concession stand on the corner.
Here?
Yeah, I would do, I would do concession, boosters, then the office, just because it's closer to the field so that we could get use. And also, I mentioned to Mr. Shergalis the possibility, if we're bulldozing through the current ticket building, which really no one uses, perhaps we have a ticket window on the outside of the building, I mean, on the corner, so you could use it for football games, because realistically...
Are you talking about the freestanding building?
No, no, right now, you're, you're plowing through the current, your blueprint has this building through it.
The current ticket booth.
So we're going to need a ticket booth for football games. So my thought being, if it was right next to the basketball arena, we only really charge for two events, basketball and football. If you had a ticket window, that way it could be used.
Somewhere, somewhere on the building here, over here?
Right.
Okay.
That would be, that would be a thought on that. Let's see. Oh, the auxiliary gent. How does someone, how does someone access that?
Right here.
That's a storage room.
No, it says storage.
Somewhere over here.
Do you have to go through the locker rooms, or?
There is a, there will be a corridor.
Okay, okay.
The stair on this level may be a single room.
I was just wondering, they were held down.
We've been stretching and pulling this plan a little bit.
Okay, I just want, the wrestling room, why do they have their own locker rooms if there's a set of locker rooms across the hall?
Actually, it's, it's showers and toilets, because my, my, our information is, is that generally for PE, the kids, the students do not shower, and, and the wrestlers need to.
Oh, okay, so. So, so no, that these locker rooms don't have, these locker rooms don't have showers, then? These are purely just changing?
Correct, just changing. And that, you know, these, these locker rooms would be used, would be used for sport, for sports, so they have showers and that, because in general, those...
Okay. I was just looking for, you know, then my next, I'm moving up to the ground floor. Again, like I said, I like the movement of the bathrooms, I like the squaring off of the lobby. I mentioned before, I still think, again, there's value in moving the school store from where it is to sort of the corner near by the stairwell. I think that...
The school store is over here.
Right. I think if it's further into the building, it's more accessible for students during lunch periods and what have you, because I think current, the current store is above the social room, so it's easy to access. I think if it's all the way over here, access. If it's all the way over here, I think student access is going to be much more limited if it's closer to the large public spaces, would be a thought. In this, we don't have those three, those three stairs in the lobby, they're not in the drawing. I hope they're still...
Me over here?
Yeah.
Those are, those are the main.
Okay. A thought would be, if it's possible, if the weight of the, if the subfloor would take it, if we could perhaps, maybe we have those four exterior doorways that are going to go away, and we have the ornamental stonework around there. So a thought might be, if we could salvage that and use it as, to restore some of the architectural detail in there, might, if the weight is possible, if it's just...
Are you talking about some of the limestone work?
Exactly.
Some of the entrances that are being removed?
Right.
And potentially using them as, to create the vestibule?
Yeah, some sort of, some sort of interior design feature, because we've got them, if the weight, if it's not an engineering issue...
It's probably better to use them inside because of the way that they were constructed in '26.
Right.
With wrought iron versus stainless steel, so we could look at something like that.
Just a thought. Another question you've got, with the library is, we have this curved wall, and there's a column exposed. Could we just maybe square off that instead of having to spend the money, effort to remove that column and all the weight above it? Just a thought.
Yeah, we're maintaining that column. We'll look at that, we'll look at that area for you.
Okay. I told you guys, I was going to look at all these little details.
We cleaned up the rest of them except for that one.
I know, exactly, okay.
We're trying to make that as open, as open as possible.
I understand, I understand.
We think that there's a lot of circulation going on there.
Right. I'm just looking from a dollars and cents that you got to take it out and shore up the whole, but. I like the new mini auditorium location, I think that's great. I think you've got, oh, on the other side, next to the special ed, we have a student commons of a couple hundred square feet. What's, I guess, it's a tiny little room, what's it going to be?
It's not really a room, it's just kind of an open area where students could, you know, pull up, you know, Wi-Fi or do something. It's more of a...
Okay.
We've, the terminology that OFCC uses is extended meeting area, ELA, so.
Let's see. Still, I think the lobby, we need a little bit more of a, slightly more dramatic entrance, or not, I know I say dramatic, just more of that people know it's the main, yeah.
This, this piece right here.
Yeah, I think that...
We're, we're working on that. We're, we're looking at, you know, the way the stair works and, and, you know, how you, how you kind of experience it, the stair and everything from the outside of the building.
Because I like, it reminds me a lot of the stuff that Studio Technia did for us a number of years back, so I like the idea of that large volume space, just, but we did, it needs to be a little more, a little more wow factor, I think. Second floor, I like the placement of lockers in the hallways, I thought that was sharp. I like the repetition of the symmetry, and I like the concentration. The only, the question I would pose, the west stairwell, it seems to have the same volume as the right, the west, as the east stairwell, but it's not going to have the same kind of necessity for drama, so I got, my question would be, from a budgetary standpoint, as much as I'm a big fan of symmetry, if it was less voluminous, is that going to save us any money?
What do you mean? Explain what you mean by less need for drama.
Oh, it's got, it's got like a three-story, it goes up, you've got a three-story open space, you've got almost two sets of staircases going from the different floor plates. It's a lot of volume for a very utilitarian space. Or do you see that as being a very...
Well, we think that, that when you start to talk about how parking is for the building, and if the parking lot on the other side of Cedar is used, that this entrance may be used more for when you have performances in the auditorium.
Okay. I see what you're saying, okay, never mind.
Yeah, and plus, if you really look at how the building's structured, there really is some sort of reason for it to be the same.
I, I'm a big fan of symmetry, I like...
Yeah, yeah, we, we think that the maintaining symmetry there, even though you may not see it, you know, it's going to, it's going to be hard to see
Right.
The whole elevation at one time.
Right, okay. The third floor, question would be, you have the small staircase that accesses the current library, or the former library space. It's flattened out, and then it's a dead end. My question would be, would it be efficient to just keep this, the small staircase to access the art space?
No, he's talking about, he's talking about this one over there.
Right, the, one of them's going to be leveled out because you need it for the elevator.
You're talking about this one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, you know, when, when we start to develop this space, what we're thinking is either, either we can maintain that, or that could potentially be an area for a ramp to get
Okay.
To this area, because we have to think about that.
Okay.
So that's the poss, that's a possibility, you're right.
Okay.
Either maintaining it or reutilizing it for a ramp.
Right, because my thought was, you currently were doing that, blowing out the wall with a series of steps, was if you already have a staircase there, continue to use that.
Yeah.
The fourth, only thing on the fourth floor, we have that bump out from the, I know, draw the ire of the vocal music, but from the street level, when we look at the perspective, when I look at the roof line, we've got these couple buildings that sort of pop out.
Yeah, those are existing right now.
I know, is, if there's any, it would be really, either give them a degree of symmetry so they're right and left, or one of them away, but...
Well, our thought is that they're, they're there now, so we're going to try and reuse and repurpose them, so.
Okay, but if we can make them a little, slightly more attractive. And then my thoughts on the site plan, I think I covered a couple of them. The suggestion would be the, if we have a gate on the west side, if we could have it be slightly better-looking than chain-link fence would be good. I mentioned the angles. And are you not proposing to have stairs where you walk up the front? Or I guess, I'm trying to understand the geometry you have for the front door.
Well, you know, there's the, there's the potential to, to access those on either side so that you recreate this ballast grade that's out there. We also think that we're going to probably change the topography a little bit in there so that the difference, the grade, the difference in grade between here and there is not going to be quite the same.
Right, right. I just, to me, if we're doing, if we're really restoring the front interior to look like original, I think we should go... Right, right. I just, to me, if we're doing, if we're really restoring the front interior to look like original, I think we should go, you know, you can walk straight up the front as opposed to the side. That would be. But otherwise, I, we had the conversation previous about the, I think, the parking components. I would, I would like us to examine the, reorienting the, I'm mispronouncing that probably, the two foot, the two home plates, the softball and baseball, if we had them closer to the plaza area, I think would be a good feature because it could draw, it could make it more of a, I don't know, say, a stance kind of a thing, but it would be more, as opposed to the softball home plates all the way off in the corner. If we could do that, I think it would make it more of a tighter space.
You mean putting them back to back?
Exactly, yeah. Otherwise, I think those were most of my, oh, the last one would be, do we have an ETA on real ideas in regard to the outbuildings for the football, the locker room, concession stand and restrooms?
Well, the, the thinking is that they want, it wants to be, the construction wants to be finished for July or August of next year. So we're thinking that before Thanksgiving, we will probably have some idea of a plan and, and what the building will kind of look like.
The one thing would be if we could have scalability with alternates would be ideal, because I know you've been having to attend the meetings that we have, there's, there's some, some ideas to move that, some portions of that sooner than later. So the sooner we have something on that would be, make me very, very happy.
Yeah, we've had, we've had some discussions with Kristen and some other folks and, you know, there are, there are some good things, you know. We know that the football lockers, that those are probably fairly new and in good shape, and I think they are, I think they're manufactured by Republic. So we can, we can relocate those. There are some other lockers in some of the other parts of the building that we can relocate to. So we're, we're looking at, you know, not just looking at programming and planning, but also thinking about how to make it more cost, more cost effective, I guess.
You may have some salvageable materials on that, okay. And I think those were from the new plans, those were all my, oh, the only thing on the exterior, I forgot one, I don't, I like the exterior a lot. The one section I'm a little not thrilled about would be, for the side perspective. The way, what would be the exterior for the cafeteria and the exterior for the competition gym, I think is a tad too, in this, at least from this schematic, so slightly a bit more contemporary. If you, one of your examples of design, I thought was really, really nice. If you can go back to your samples. That one, go ahead. That, I, that I thought was really sharp. So something, that kind of glassiness with that design aesthetic, I thought was a good. Because I thought this was a little too, in my opinion, a little too, you've got very 1926, then we got sort of very contemporary, then you got sort of retro contemporary, then we've got red breath. At least the way it's coming across in the 3D perspective, it's.
Yeah, you know, we, you know, like everything else at the starting point, and we'll have many discussions. Because even, even our office had a discussion about that form.
Right.
And how strong it is. And if you go back to, you know, if we, if we maintain the clear story and you look at this one, you know, there's the opportunity to get rid of the, the sort of sawtooth approach on the elevation.
Yeah, I think that was.
Which, we, we think that there's some validity to it, but we realize that it's a very sort of strong, strong approach. We did talk about taking that back and you would get a, you would sort of get a cleaner line there.
On the clear story, I mean, I like, I like the heavy use of it. I think it's very good for the Northern Light. The question I would pose from a roof, the roofing material, what would be the surface? Is it gonna be?
Yeah, we probably, and, and this is really a discussion that we typically have with the CMs, but it would either be, I don't know what you have in your, in your estimate right now, but typically lightly, it's been going towards TPOs.
And TPOs, I'm sorry.
It's, it's a PVC roof. It's a, it's a single membrane roof.
Okay.
Okay, which is probably what's on, I don't even know what's on portions of that building right now. But it's typically, it's what's typically used and it's what the OFCC uses. We use it all the time.
The.
And you can use it on slopes and flat.
With the number of those roofs, I mean, from a, from a maintenance standpoint and from a drainage standpoint, do we see that being, having challenges because it's a whole field, a whole, I mean, it's.
Well, yeah, and, and we're also talking about the amount that we have. And that's going to be sort of a discussion that we're going to be having in the next probably month or so. What's different about the way that we have our clear stories designed versus the way that it was designed in 1926 is we have a, a flat area that you start to see being developed and you see it in elevation as well. And what can happen is that really, you see how this window, and I don't know how, how, how everybody can see this, but the window is raised up, right? We could really provide a point of drainage at that point.
That's, okay.
Yeah.
Because I was just looking from, from a maintenance standpoint and from a.
Yeah, we, we think that there's a, there's the, there's, there's the opportunity for that. You could start to see it. You know, you see it right, right here.
Those were all my questions. So, thank you.
Okay, I got a couple. If we go to the site plan and we think about the athletic field as it exists now, I know that we're, there's a conversation, you're trying to put together some ideas about the welcome center. I wonder about the parking, and, well, I wonder how what's left there relates to the other work. I don't know who to ask that question to. You know what I'm asking? We've got, I guess what I see is that we're possibly gonna put some park in there, but I'm not sure how, is this part of the work, Gary, that you're doing?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, the, whatever the design is on the other, what's not done there, you're working on that?
You know, we're, we're looking at the entire site. You know, we, we know that the, the track and the, and the field is done, but, but all of this space here, we're going to, we're studying as well as this part and also that. So it's a complete site.
Okay, so that when we look at some iteration, we'd be looking at some more development of this piece?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question.
Looking at the whole site as opposed to just the center portion also helps us out with our, our sustainability. Because when we were looking at just the center portion, a lot of that was hard surface, which includes the building. So this allowed the site to be larger and have the opportunity for a lot, a lot more grass.
Okay.
So that's a positive thing.
Right. Okay, now I want to go, well, there's a couple of things. The, I'm, there's a, I'm assuming that the area that you had for AutoTech is the same as what we have now? Do we know? Is that, I mean, is that, that's, yeah, in terms of square footage?
There was, that was in our materials.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's.
And, and you know, the last thing that you asked us to get, I didn't have a chance to look at.
There you go.
Where is it?
Computer audio, multimedia, business marketing, auto, first one.
It's first one.
Yeah, 6,400 in the POR, 6,371. You're up by 29 feet.
Okay. Okay. And when you, I think you, you talked about the wrestling being about one and a half mat or something like that. What, what does that mean? Versus two, I think is what I heard.
Yeah, the original, the original request was to have two, to have the room be the size of two mats. And that room is really just, it's not for competition, it's a practice room. So the entire room is matted anyway. So it's, it's basically the size of a full-size mat, which is 42 by 42, plus another half-size mat. That, that was, that was just.
Okay, so if the competition is gonna be held where?
The competitions would be held in, in one of the other two gyms.
Okay, okay, okay. So they would be bringing mats in to?
Yes, this, that room is basically just for wrestling practice and for criminal justice.
Okay.
Or, you know, somebody else could use the room too, I mean, for some kind of exercise or something.
Okay. When, the earlier drawing, when we had that space for culinary arts, and then we see a space that potentially where it could fit now, it looks like that new space is about 60% of what the old space was. Am I looking at that wrong or what?
Well, I, I think that the, the new space that we have includes the food, foods service as well as, and I'm, I gotta get the correct name, the CTE computer room and the, the.
Which one are you looking?
I'm, I'm looking at the, the Cedar level.
The, oh, okay.
And I'm looking at these, these two rooms right there.
Right.
Right? That whole space, that purp, that pink, pink space up there, for culinary to go in there, you would utilize this whole space, which was the same amount of space as we had on the last plan.
Okay, I, okay, I guess I was looking at it as that being two rather than one.
Yeah, see, what would happen is if it goes to culinary, it goes from two to one, two programs to one program. Or this program gets, you know, somehow we find space in the building for that particular program.
And right now, you're talking about that's, you know, I guess the, so the, the one space that you're thinking about utilizing right now is, is, what did you say?
It's a food.
Computer?
It's FC, it's Food Conservancy, it's, you know, the old, it's, you know, Home Act.
Oh, okay.
And, and computer networking.
Okay, okay. And in terms of the number of spaces, they're the same with this expanded one being the only difference? And same as what we have?
Yeah, the, the question is, is if you, if you, if you introduce culinary, a culinary program, one of the other programs is, is going to go away now. Computer networking is up there. Could something else, could computer network, if computer networking stays, it could go to the space that, for the program that is, the other program that's eliminated.
Okay.
I mean, unless, unless somebody says we, you know, we go back to where we were before, which is, we're providing space for, for all of those programs.
Well, there's always a growth question as it relates to CTE, but it's, you know, I know it's hard to figure this out when we don't have it in place right now. But I think that with the world moving and discussing STEM education more and more, and we're, you know, trying to push that down in the middle schools, we ought to see a surge in the number of students that would be choosing to go into programs that are laying them in real jobs out of high school. So it's, it's a concern that I have, but I don't know that there's much to do with that. But anyway, that's just a question in terms of, you know, I'm trying to figure out how we would maneuver that five years out.
Yeah, I, I would, personally, tonight, you know, there, one of the other takeaways from tonight was, or that I would, would like to have is some clarity in terms of, of program. Particularly for, you know, primarily for CTE, because I think we've kind of ironed out a lot of those things that were kind of, you know, floating around. But if we, if there was some clarity, we could probably plan, in other words, if we could probably plan more appropriately for quote-unquote "some expansion in the future" if we had some, a clear directive on what we're supposed to be doing. Because there still seems to be some softness in that area of the building.
Gary, I, I think that's an excellent point, and it's a conversation that I had with a community member this afternoon about some, about that squishiness that we're, I think we're all feeling. You all are feeling it in this process. We're feeling it as a board. I know the administration is feeling it. And I think that it, it's not a good, we can't come up with the right answer because we don't have, and this is Nancy Pepler's perspective, we don't have a good strategic view of where and what culinary arts will be in five to 10 years, let alone, you know, or, or in 20 or 30 years, let alone five or 10 years. And so I guess, Dr. Dixon, it would, I, I think it'd be helpful at this point, based on Ron's questions, for you to talk a little bit about what, how the, the doc, what do you call, the, the team made the rec, how you came up with the recommendations that you did and, and shared with Gary's team.
Well, you, one thing for sure, we don't have a plan for culinary arts. We don't have one. We have a lot of people who are passionate about the program and about the opportunity that it affords for students, but we don't have a plan in place and a timeline is, is still moving. So our thoughts were, which of the two plans between a engineering program and a culinary program, could we start immediately for kids? And that would be engineering. We have two STEM schools. We can, right now with the new House Bill 487, we have those STEM education programs, CTE programs starting earlier for students. So we can begin those programs and classes around STEM next year for our sixth graders. And then we can grow those programs. So when the new high school opens, we will have engineering, hopefully more students wanting to get into STEM programs and have those classes ready and available for them. For culinary, on the other hand, it would take us more time to plan an effective program. Get teachers, get students interested in it, and decide what courses would students take next year in the transition space for our students. Make those decisions. So what we thought would be best, if we partner with Tri-C and possibly Beachwood and some other schools, I think Euclid was one, to see through partnerships, could we give our students some opportunities beginning next year? We have an articulation agreement with Tri-C. We can use that and, and even take some dollars and transport our students to that campus for that program. So we thought it would be best to use the space for engineering and grow our STEM program and partner with our colleges and other school districts for our culinary program. And that was, and that was the rationale.
And I think that's one, that's one piece of this, of this puzzle that we're trying to put together for, for CTE. But it's a, it's, it's a longer-term prospect than what you need for completion of the, of the building plans.
Right.
Bottom question. When we talk about the exterior spaces and using more glass, is glass and brick and that combination, is it about the same cost?
I guess I don't understand the question.
Which is cheaper?
The same cost, what?
Which is, if that, as each other.
Oh, or glass?
Is glass, if we do the brick wall or the glass wall?
What's the difference in cost?
Glass and brick.
Is it? You think? Glass is cheaper?
It's a function of what the back of the brick is. So, I mean, you have a face brick, then you have a cavity, you have the insulation, you have a backup brick behind it. That whole assembly is more expensive than just glass.
But the taller the glass gets, the more expensive it gets.
Right, you start getting really tall glass, you have to provide structural support for that glass. So it's kind of a loaded question.
He's good at those.
Okay, I got, I, I, I got the answer now. I can talk about it. Okay. Anybody else?
No, go ahead. Most of my questions have, I went back through my notes. Most of my questions have been answered.
A lot of mine have too. I only have like eight more pages, so. Some little, just, and again, I'm not sure this is answered yet or can be answered. Do we know how many seats in the mini auditorium?
No, we don't know that yet. But we're, we're thinking that based on the square footage, that there's around 200. That's what we're hoping for.
Okay. Then the, the drama classroom, sort of taking the place of the black box to some degree. What are the possibilities in that of setting up, you talked about a stage, a slightly raised stage in there potentially? Anything for lighting, sound, I mean, anything to actually where it could become sort of a performance space? It's, it's a small, I mean, it's a, it's a regular classroom size.
I would, I would say that it's probably not a performance space in the sense that, you know, you're not gonna bring the public in there to do a performance. But I would think in terms of having, if there's a, when I say stage two, it's basically a platform. You don't have, you know, I, I don't know if you'd have curtains and that kind of stuff. It's basically a platform, you know, you could put some adjustable lighting in there so that you could, you know, effectively. so that you could, you know, effectively change the atmosphere for, let's say, a student practice performance, you know.
Eric, could I piggyback on that? Because I, I think the, again, from the conversation that I had this afternoon, the question was how, at, what space, what space might we be able to use in this, in this proposed plan to teach our students about smaller theater space, lighting and sound and all of those issues? Could that be accommodated, this is my question, for example, in the mini auditorium, somewhere other than the big stage?
There is, there is the, um, and this is a, this is a, when I say a programming issue, it's a programming issue in terms of who's using what, when. There is the potential to use the main stage as a mini black box theater. I mean, you can set the lighting up and you can set, you know, curtains up so that you could use that in effect as a, as a, as a black box. Now, the, the issue with that is, who's using it when? Now, I've been in the auditorium when there's been nothing on the stage, I've been in the auditorium when there's, somebody's been teaching a class in there. So, to me, it becomes an issue of how are you going to use that space on a daily, a daily basis, but we can certainly design the lighting and the rigging so that, with some portable seating, that you could kind of build a, a, a little mini black box on that stage.
That, I just want to add that theater consultant Sonia Winter was the one who actually made that recommendation, because you have all the lighting, you have sound systems, you have rigging, you, it, it's an ideal space. It really comes down to, as Gary said, scheduling. But one of the things that's kind of interesting is, is you could still schedule, let's say, an evening performance in that, on the stage in the black box, but the way the auditorium works, you could still have a lecture in the auditorium during the day because of the thrust of the, of the possible pit lift. And so, she actually was the one who, who was one of the first to say, you know, to the cost of a black box of putting all of that equipment, when all of a sudden, you've got it sitting there on the stagehouse itself, and it's a very easy space, and a lot of, lot of schools, particularly universities, use their stage as the black box.
Yeah, I mean, I have seen that done before effectively, and it, and even in a profession, the Cleveland Playhouse did it for a while. They used one of their proscenium spaces and created a, a black box out of it for certain shows, so it is possible, if, if the intent is there ahead of time going into it, so that it's planned for. Would that include, is there anything for, I know way back, there have been discussions of possibly sprung floors for dance and things. Any of that in any of these spaces, or is that long gone?
I think when we start talking about maybe the, one or two of the, the, there are two rooms on the Cedar level that are called Dance Aerobics.
Actually, right now, they're just called Aerobics.
On the Washington level, these two spaces right here.
Yeah.
I don't know if we talked about putting a sprung floor, but, you know, is there, is there an issue with using a Marley floor in there, just a, a roll-out Marley or something that? I mean, I think both of them would probably, you know, if you were doing a lot of dance, you know, well, I, you know, not maybe just gymnastic dance, but, but, you know, ballet or something else, then maybe a sprung floor would be, with a Marley on top of it would, would be the ideal, but, you know, for a lot of places, a Marley floor, uh, kind of is suitable, so.
No, I, I would agree with that. If we can, it might be also helpful just for the public's purposes that if that can be labeled, right now, it's just labeled Aerobics, but it's labeled Dance Aerobics, because I think, again, a long time ago, there was talk about room for dance, and I think that's appealing. I would second what Eric said in terms of that entranceway on the Cedar level, the far right, or the east, the eastern end at Cedar, the, and you said you already still working on how to make that.
Yeah.
I mean, I hesitate to use the word grand, but if we're putting in that auditorium right there, I don't know how much that cuts off any vista possibility. I know the main, main entrance obviously is south, but I would just say yes to, you said you were already working on how to make it as expansive as possible, and I would, I think that'd be great. The art rooms on the third floor, do those still, are we still thinking windows for those, that so the students can see what's going on, at least at the front portion of it?
Oh, they, they have, right now, there's, they have windows.
If, if we go to the perspectives, what are the?
Right, no, they'd have natural light, I'm just thinking for the students to be able to see in and out, because we had talked about that as being part of the appeal of it, is students seeing other students work.
Right now, that would happen on, on, on the.
I'm busy.
How's that? It would happen right there. No, and then in the front also, you would be able to see.
But for the interior, we'd be the, yeah.
Yeah, where we used to have corridors along there.
Right, right, but those are just on, yeah, yeah.
No, we used to have corridors along there, we talked about students seeing in, so you could do that.
We could do it still in the southern, the southern area, yeah, which is, again, better than nothing. It's a little lost, but not, it's better than nothing. But I guess the other thing is just out on the field, it sounds like, I mean, we do have to have a football locker room, yes? Is that generally part of the plan, we need a locker room for the football players? And right now.
It's a team locker room, because it's, it's not just, it's just, not just football, but it's.
Track boss, whoever else is going to use the field area. But we have to have some space like that, and it was on the old plan attached to the building, and now you're saying it's going to be potentially part of the outside, so that begins to necessitate an outside building then, right?
Well, I think the, the, I mean, I was the one who sort of, the reality is that for two years, you're going to need something. I mean, right now, our team changes in, we have lock, they use the regular locker rooms we have, I assume, in the south gym, these are the ones in the south gym. That's locker room they currently use. For two years, there's no locker rooms, because the high school's torn up. So the issue really ends up being, you need something for two years, and are you doing, there's a temporary or is it permanent? You know, based upon the amount of money we're supposed to spend, I'd rather spend the money on, on, my personal preference is permanent versus temporary. The question ends up being then in the future, is it really the locker room that we're using for the game, or is it the locker room that the visitors using, in my opinion? I think that's, that was sort of the impetus for my questioning, was, we got to do something for two years, and then what's the long-term benefit from that? So I don't, I don't know that, I wasn't thinking that, hey, this is the football team's locker room, because I think from a game standpoint, it's going to be, logistically, it creates a choke point, actually, because that's where all of our home visitors are walking, where, where your team's going to enter the field. But I think the, the key for me is at least is that, for two years, we need some, there got, we need something for two years. That was the impetus for my.
But I think Eric Cobble makes a good point, that if we're, if we're assuming that that's going to happen, then we're ta, cutting it out of the square footage for the main building.
Right, that was.
But have, is that, and so, is that currently part, we're budgeting for those outbuildings then, is the thing, we're, we're going to, or not?
We will.
We will. I mean, they're not an alternate, or they will be an alternate, or they're going to be a, that's, because if we have to have the locker room, we put it out there. I understand the question of temporary versus permanent.
That's a discussion point, because we've talked about a potential funding stream that's outside of the, the bond issue, so that's a discussion point that we need to have, is how do we want to utilize those dollars, and what are the, what is the budget for that building? But your point is, is correct. We took it out of the scope of work for the main high school building. That's correct. So it does assume that that building's going to be built, because we need that space. If we decide not to build it, we're going to have to look hard at putting it back in to the scope of work on the, on the main high school building.
Eric, can I piggyback again?
Sure.
Just to, to, to be clear, or, or for my clarity, the temporary structure that we talked about purchasing or renting, I believe renting, for two years for locker rooms and other things, was $400,000. And was, or wasn't in the overall budget for the project?
It originally was not.
That's right.
Okay.
Right, it was not.
If we have to put it into the budget, we would have to find other places to.
Okay.
Right.
So, so I, I don't want to, I don't want to take us off track too much on that conversation for tonight, but I think we have to remember what Eric just raised for and how difficult it would be to put it back in if we, or, or how necessary it would be to put it back in.
Right, it has to exist somewhere.
Right.
Okay, I think that's it for my questions.
Yeah.
Always a good football, I guess.
All athletic sports.
Yes, I am.
Superintendent?
Nancy, may I ask?
No, I actually, I just, I went back through all of my.
Nancy? Okay, Nancy, yeah, I thought, I thought. Okay, we're ready to hear from the audience then. So, what's going to happen is you can come up, state your name, I'll recognize you, I guess. State your name, and then, we're gonna, you have five minutes to state your comments, questions, or whatever. Sam?
Thank you. Throat surgery has made it difficult for me to speak, so I appreciate the offer to go first. My question really.
Well, say who you are, so we know.
I'm sorry, Sam Bell. What are the worst cases, this is for Jim primarily, what are the worst-case thermal assumptions underlying the sizing of the various heating systems that you've proposed? That is, what if we have 30 days of 10 below zero? Can you give us warmth in the building throughout that 30 days? What if we have 90, 30 days of 90 degrees Fahrenheit with 90% humidity? Can you keep us comfortable during that period of time? And are these LCA figures, the lifetime cost analysis figures, based on the current length of the school year? Or do they take into account the possible effect of changing to a year-round school calendar? So you don't have to necessarily answer that question, but I would like to see an answer posted in a timely fashion, and I remind the board that that has not happened on a regular basis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Can I, will I be getting something that?
Yes.
We'll summarize it, yes. Yes, thank you.
I'm Laura Marks, I'd like to talk about two things, outdoor space and pianos. So, a few, a decade or so ago, when the district was responsible for keeping track of the gardens that line the Cedar Road garden beds, they were mostly full of weeds. Jan Kias came in and planted those, she tended them. Richard Wong's tended them, it's sort of a rotating community thing. So Jan asked me to ask the school board, can she remove those? She's working with the Noble Neighbors and the City of Cleveland Heights to create beautification beds at the corner on the median strips of Monticello near Noble. And she would like to remove the plants next spring from the Cedar, from the front of the high school before destruction starts and move them into the Noble neighborhood. So if you don't give me an answer, that I'm telling Jan that she has your permission to do that. Okay. Gary, I would really like to see on the schematic here, the site plan, that where you say lawn area, please write green space. Cleveland Heights is not fond of lawn. And we would, the Sustainability Working Group would like to meet with Benkee as they work through the landscape to design. This site plan does not have enough bio-retention areas, we need retention areas on, on the Lee Road side of the football, around the football field. And I don't see any gray water retention systems in the plan, has gray water been dropped? So, those were my outdoor space comments. As a piano technician, I'm looking at just for budget, the operational budgetary planning, I'm seeing a need for three or four additional pianos in the high school, because of the additional practice rooms on the fourth floor. So I've been working for the last several years on a long-range plan to, on the flow of pianos through the district that includes action now, action in June, and action in the summer of 2017. And I would, I've been trying to get an appointment with Steve and not getting response from him or Stacy to start talking about the long-term plan, but I would recommend that we start talking about that soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brian? Oh, oh, I didn't see your hand, did you raise it?
Go ahead, Jones.
Okay, let's, let.
All right, I'm Jones Pearl. And I just wanted to, you know, say I, I support, you know, pursuit of a culinary program, I, I think it would be great, I, I, I understand your rationale, but I went on the Beechwood High School tour, and their culinary program adjoined their big kitchen space, you know, they were separate spaces, but it had joined it, so I don't know if it's a possibility, you know, for the future to just think about that. And I do hope that the kitchen that, that you have in the plans is one that will have the capacity for, for creating and serving real food on real serving dishes with dishwashers, you know, so that we're looking long-term that way in terms of waste and, and stuff. And I also wondered how many parking spaces there were for bikes. I saw the little, I saw the little space there for bikes, but I just wondered how many bikes that would hold. And then when it came to the geothermal issue, I, I think you should keep in mind using the building as a teaching tool. And geothermal seems something that would serve that purpose well. And, you know, think also about the long-term environmental costs of each of the options. So don't just think about your cost upfront, think long-term, not just about the savings that you'd get from geothermal, but think about the costs that occur with the accessing natural gas. And that it's, one of these is a renewable approach that will be around 35 years from now, and another is one that may well not be renewable. So look long-term. And then the noise issue of, of the systems is, is an interesting one, and I don't know if you heard the Diane Ream show, she did an environmental outlook on noise and its implications on, on health and mental health, physical health. Had a, a number of experts speaking about it, and actually, the issue of these sorts of systems and the harm the noise does to us was raised on that program, so think about that, you know, and take that as a cost as well, please. I think those were, those were my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Shainer. I have a couple of comments. Two of these meetings ago, I came up here and I said something about the science department and the placement of the rooms. And I would like to say that after that, we had discussions, they were very interesting, and folks listened, and I think that improvements were made. So we appreciate that very much, the accessibility of you guys and willingness to make some changes. Second comment has to do with the parking situation. And maybe it's a little too flip of me to say that many folks in the room seem to be real casual with other people's parking places. But not all of us are, are, we, we all appreciate green space, and we all want to retain water in the right places. But mid-winter, not all of us are going to be all that spry getting across the street to the parking place. Many of us arrive with stuff. And instead of walking out of the building with our stuff, getting in the car and driving away, we'll walk out of the building, go get our car, drive it back, get our stuff, drag that out. And you're, you're making the whole process more time-consuming and less user-friendly for the building. So with all due respect to the need to retain the water and handle it properly, it would be nice to see a solution that involves permeable pavement or swales, and like they did at Cumberland, or something like that, that can allow some additional parking place on-site for the staff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Wilkinson, just a couple of comments. There certainly was more education discussion tonight unlike what Dr. Dixon was talking about in terms of more strategic thinking on, on. on curriculum. Two specific points. Photovoltaics should be a growing reality for the district. We can't quite predict the time and place, but that will shift the HVAC life cycle cost. Currently, there's nothing of that factored into it. And with photovoltaics, the electrical cost would go down further, and the more electrical the heating air conditioning system is, the more it'll benefit from that. So I throw that out. The other one is thinking for maintenance folks, glass cleaning. You know, daylighting is really super, and I want it, but dreary windows can be as depressing as no windows. And cleaning up, now, there exists self-cleaning glass, but it's a premium price. Don't know where you guys have factored that in, but I would encourage serious consideration of self-cleaning glass to reduce maintenance time. And it's going to be huge, the amount of glass increase, the glass cleaning is going to be a huge task.
Thank you.
I'm Maisie Adams. I'm on the Architecture and Archive Preservation Subcommittee of the Facilities Group. And I just want to sort of get it out there that we would love to see, since it was mandated in the bond issue, that preservation of the historic core as much is done as possible. I think the, the schematics right now are a hopeful sign. We have done walkthroughs of the interior and exterior, and hope along the exterior that, particularly on the courtyard faces, stonework is preserved, doorways are preserved, or renovated back to what they were originally intended, particularly the main courtyard entrance, that any windows go in, that they replicate the original 1926 windows and are functional, as opposed to some of the things that have been put up lately, and also that decorative elements are maintained. Within the interior, there is not much of the historic core that will be left. And so beyond the auditorium, we would respectfully request maintaining the floor tiles in the historic corridor that goes east-west. I know there's some discussion on the beauty of those, but they're lovely, and they're historic, and they've been there 100 years, and they're in fantastic shape. We would also love to see on the interior, things like railings and balusters from the stairwells being reused or maintained, particularly the look of them, so that we can maintain some of that preservation within the historic core. We know in the newer spaces, it would be different. As part of the Archives Project, we're identifying a large number of pieces, plaques, photographs. There's a bust, there's things throughout the building. It would be nice if there was a space. I noticed a mini gallery off of the entrance, the courtyard entrance. I don't know if that's for student artwork, or if that's somewhere that we can put those plaques back up. I know we've talked to some teachers who are interested. There's a Teacher of the Year plaque, so there should be some consideration of where those things are going to go back into the interior. What else? I noticed in one of the examples that you had, I think it might have been from Kenyon College, I don't know if that's true, but where they have the exterior wall is now an interior wall. Any places that can, that can be done, where the exterior features will no longer be exterior, but those elements can be preserved and seen, that would be wonderful. And we would hope that any additions to the, all the additions, would be compatible and sympathetic to the 1926. We know that there's going to be differences, but if you go completely contemporary, it will be a fairly glaring change. We'd also like to see, if possible, in the new spaces, some of the stonework elements and the massing of the doorways and things like that replicated, so that we can maintain some semblance of symmetry, not symmetry, but so that everything looks similar, even if it's a different design. And then I would echo some of the earlier comments, that that entrance on the east side should be substantial. The main entrance right now for the high school, speaking as a parent, is pretty sad. It looks nice, they've done some great work, but it is not an obvious entrance to a school building, so it would be great if it was more substantial and dramatic. That's it.
Thank you.
My name's Don Frederick, 3585 Coming Road, Cleveland Heights, Ohio, 26-year resident of the district, multi-year pusher on the issue of CTE, still waiting for leadership. Our kids deserve access, opportunity, and equity, and it's taking way too long. The culinary program, you know, a lot of us liked it, think it's a good idea toward other culinary programs. When I first overlooked the project, and the idea was to move all CTE programming back to the high school, there's like three programs here, I knew there'd be no space for culinary. I mean, it's just, to do the other ones well, and like, we should, with the accurate space, there's no space for culinary. I took a Don Frederick estimate of the Beechwood space, and I came up with a kitchen and serving area, all about 4,000 square feet. That little box up there, that might be a culinary someday, I don't think that's anywhere near, near 4,000 square feet. But I'm in it for the long haul. So let's get back to focusing on these things. Let's get Shaker and Warrensville involved. I say this at the podium a lot, I just want to see things happen. Our working group has put together a lot of time and effort to study the culinary, to study the options and opportunities of a manufacturing program, which would be excellent. And we're not getting any traction with the administration. I mean, I know the administration's changed. We have a new administration this year, but this is the third one we've been trying to get traction with on, on some of these issues. And our kids can use these programs more than anyone. The programs, 80% of the kids that graduate from these programs go on to college. And statistically, they perform better than academics-only students. So it's a no-brainer. I don't know what, what's it going to take to get it started, but I'm in it for the long haul, and let's keep moving forward.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Mario Mustandrea, and I'm on the Facility Accountability Committee for the Lead in Energy Efficiency, as well as I'm with the Sustainability Working Group. And I'm pleased to see that you're identifying roof space that'll accept renewable energy technology when it's ready, or the district is ready and it's suitable. And I have some questions. Will your plans include conduit runs for that technology? Will there be roof access to maintain any of that technology? Will you, will the plans include safety and fall protection? Will there be workspace for power conditioning and balance of systems? Are there areas that you're looking at for future energy storage? Have you considered solar thermal technology for the south-facing pitched roof of the nadatorium? And I'm interested to, if anybody wants to take this question, can, can you tell us your thoughts on solar PV, the cost, the efficiency, and if you feel, or if and when you think it will achieve grid, grid parity, if anybody wants to take that? Thanks.
Thank you. Steve?
He's still writing.
Just a process question, because I, you know, I guess, one of the things that we would do is try to take all these questions and put our answers up.
Yeah, I don't want to, with the, with the time we have tonight, it would take a lot to answer all that. So we'll huddle, and we'll get answers to those questions and get those posted. And we'll try to be as timely as we can with that.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's try to do it quickly.
I know, I'm hearing that. And it takes, it does take some effort and time to research and get those answers and get them posted, but we will try to be as, as quick as we can.
Okay. Anything else?
I would just like to say to, to the community that we are still committed to designing a viable CTE program. We've not dropped any of the initiatives. We're still striving to work towards a comprehensive program, but we're trying to maximize the resources that we have now, and really partner with other entities that can help us put together a viable program. But when we look out, look at, what could we provide for students right now? Those are the STEM programs. What can we do immediately? What can we do long-term? Is really build upon a viable program such as culinary arts. So I understand your passion. I understand the work that everyone has worked on for quite some time. And we, that has not been forgotten, or we've not thrown it to the side. But we really want to look and make the right decisions and the best decisions for students right now, knowing that we're going to have students ready to learn next year, and we know that we can offer them the STEM programs. So we're still working on it, and something that we're going to still get input from others. So we've not thrown it aside at all. And if we have to look at some other options moving forward, we can, you know, we've talked to Steve, and, and both Steve, about some other ways that we can possibly provide those types of programs.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? In that case, I'll...
Thank you, everyone. Thank you again for all the steady work leading up to tonight. Much appreciated.
And I will entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I got so moved from here.
Mr. Cobble.
Mr. Cobble says yes. Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Sure.